So I will call the June thirteenth school committee meeting to order.
We're recording that on edge.
School code, Randallini, yes, and Long?
Yes.
Sarkowski?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. The meeting will be recorded and posted following meeting. Public comment will be available by Zoom. Remember, also email me at nbrandalini@sit.org. And any correspondences with the district or school committee meeting available through the public record or FDI requests will by law not include the private information of staff and students. Yep. All right, so first, what our business, we are just going to have a discussion on reviewing school committee operating protocols. So I'll share my screen so anyone can see that. But I also provided the committee and superintendent Burkett with a copy, a hard copy too. Um, I don't want to go too deep into it, but I just thought that it was kind of a nice time for us to um just refresh on this.
Ms. Brandalini, are you able to share?
Yes.
Nope.
Let's try that, let's try that again. You are under Nicole Brandalini, yes?
No.
Oh, what are you under?
I'm under the SPS Zoom. I changed my name, but not my assigned in through the SPS Zoom. I have to share, I don't want to fold us up really. I just wanted to kind of review our operating protocols. These are available on the SPS website under the School Committee tab for anybody who was interested in reviewing. So just a few things that I just wanted to reestablish that the role of our committee is to establish the vision, a set of goals and objectives, to create and review policies and assure accountability to sustain continued improvement in teaching and learning, leaving the day-to-day operations to the superintendent and staff. So I thought that was an important bullet point for us to sort of this kind of review. Clearly defining success in district goal setting, assuring accountability during superintendent evaluation process, advocate for the achievement needs and interests of all students, and place these above all else in the decisions we make, and provide fiduciary oversight, fiscal transparency, and responsibility. So as we've had more participation, mostly because of COVID, which we, I think we all agree is awesome. I think even as, you know, I kind of go along, it's kind of good to educate and sort of put that out there for what the role of this committee truly is and what our responsibilities are. Professional conduct is important, so of course, you know, keeping things respectful and supporting and upholding the decision of the majority once a vote is taken, and familiarizing and adhering to policy BCA, which is our school committee member athletes' policies. I think the next section is more about, you know, how we hold and conduct our meetings, and this is probably the most important one for tonight going forward, that school committee meetings are business meetings held in public, not public meetings. We will strive to hold efficient and effective meetings and conduct business through a set agenda. We will always solicit input on future agenda items at each meeting and follow Robert's rules of order. So I think that if anybody on the committee has any comments they want to add about our operating protocols, if this is something that we feel is what I'm liking and we want to maintain, or is it something that we want to review more? Kind of open to your input and feedback on that, but I just want to make sure that we know that we encourage and support community members who attend meetings to participate during the public comment, and that it is not a Q and A session. The school committee meeting is a meeting that is held in public and not a public meeting. So we want to get everybody the answers to questions that they want. We want to make sure that we're respectful and open to feedback and also efficient, so. Any feedback from the committee on that?
I just make a comment, it's kind of a little bit about where these came from. Was it two years ago?
Yeah.
Two years ago when Superintendent Burkett came on. And really for me personally, we really leveraged the ability to benefit from our relationship with M.A.S.S., Mass Association of School Committees. They offered lots of workshops and so on, and we took that opportunity to meet with them. And one of the items that we talked about that we, I don't think we either had or we weren't aware we had, but it gave us the opportunity to create these operating protocols. I think also it was at the beginning of the pandemic and we were trying to figure out how we could maintain doing business while also including, including the public to participate. So that's kind of where these came out. I think that as our committee evolves, which every year we have a new chair, the chair can choose how to operate their meetings, but this is the basis of which we do that. So I just want, I'm just in full support of it. I think that obviously we can always look to potentially edit these in the future. I think that we're going to have a workshop at some point this summer, fall, maybe we can do it then. I have no issue with any of it, I think it's great, and again, it just provides kind of a reference point if there is question as to what our role is and how we operate, and also if the public asks questions about why we operate the way we do, we can always refer to this. Those are my comments.
It's pretty standard for school committees to have operating protocols in general. So this basically, part of it came from M.A.S.C., I would say the Mass Association of School Committees originally, and then we kind of made it Situate. And also I did provide the committee with a copy of public participation file BEDH. So that might be helpful. And for public participants tonight, I have a copy at the table for a public comment as well. If you wanted to review that. So I just want to make sure that we're clear and transparent on kind of how this works, because I think it could be intimidating for people to, you know, as people that speak in public, it can be certainly intimidating. So I just want to make sure that everybody has the information so that they're best informed, you know, when they do want to make a comment, because we want comment. Anything else before we march on, anyone?
I see.
I don't have that power over here, Peter. All right, so. Next on our agenda is the recognition of retirees.
Thank you. Nicole Brandalini, and good evening, everybody. That's really special people, a handful could make it tonight. Please, it's been tradition to invite our retirees to this meeting to honor them personally. Provide a small gift for them. Plenty of us, and to have the principals say some, have some nice things about them that they deserve. So we've got eleven retirees this year from the entire staff and representing hundreds of years of experience and commitment to the profession, but also to specifically, in most cases to Situate, a lot of years spent in Situate, to our kids, devoted to our families. In the two years I've been here, knowing these individuals, they've had a really huge impact on a lot of people's lives. But I personally want to thank them and want to call out each of our principals to introduce each one of these, say a few words about them, so we get a little flavor of them as individuals, and wish them the best in their new journeys and excitement. We have plenty of substitute openings. You really miss it over the summer, we'll be back. So I'll call Dr. Long, Dr. Long to.
Yeah, welcome. So, um, so thank you for having me. I am very excited to acknowledge first Teresa Dirksmeyer. She is here this evening. She has been a paraprofessional in our school for twenty-two years. She is always willing to jump in and support students, anything we need, anything for our colleagues. She's flexible, she knows our students, she builds relationships with them, and she is committed to supporting individualized needs of our students, which we know have a great range, educational, social, emotional. She has just been outstanding, and I've gotten to know her very well in the time I've been here. I knew she was looking forward to traveling and spending more time with her grandchildren in her retirement, so I'd like to congratulate, as we call her, Terri D., Ms. Teresa Dirksmeyer, on her retirement. Next, we have Ms. Beth Nylund. She has been eleven years as a paraprofessional. She has been a reliable member of our Jenkins staff. She's performed several roles, including a role in the language-based program. She's worked with upper grades, she's worked in kindergarten. She always forms very close relationships with our students. She's always eager to learn more about the students she's with, and also see their progress, progression as they leave Jenkins. And so it's knowing that she's made her mark and helped them along the way. So we often have students that speak highly of her as well. I want to thank you, Beth, for your commitment to our students. Thank you, Ms. Nylund.
Ms. Denise Fairhurst, she's been in our district for twenty-two years. She's been our library paraprofessional. She started in Situate in September of two thousand at the Hathaway School. She has worked in three of our four elementary schools. Her commitment and commitment and collaboration of the best interest of our students is just modeled daily through her actions, the way she implements new ideas in our library, working together at our library online. She's just really led the charge with that. It's been great. Her colleagues across the district look to her for advice, support, collaboration. And she really has just been a great tremendous addition to the library. And she looks forward to spending more time with her family in the summer at the campground. So we'd like to thank Denise. You will be missed. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Kathy Harris has fifteen years plus of Situate in Situate. She's our cafeteria hostess. She knows every student's name. She knows their siblings. She really builds a relationship with them, and that's such an important part of our students' day. She's always enthusiastic, she's always positive. She's implemented the Golden Tray Award, so our PBIS is extended to the cafeteria. Students are very excited, and she will be greatly missed. So thank you, Ms. Kathy Harris. And we talked about years of experience. I would just like to acknowledge that between the four of them, about seventy years of experience at the Jenkins School. So we are grateful for their service. There will be tough shoes to fill, but I'd like to congratulate them all on their retirement, and I wish them all the best in their next adventure.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Ms. Maubert?
I have the pleasure of honoring three of our educators and our staff at Cushing School tonight. The first that I'll start with is Lori Randall. For the past sixteen years, Lori has been a highly respected and dedicated educator at Cushing School. During that time, she has focused on what's always been best for her students, and she carry, and she currently maneuvered them through the fifth grade curriculum, as well as the social, emotional challenges that come with being a preteen. She has dedic, she's dedicated, she's committed, and just very, very caring, not only to her students, but as well to her, to those colleagues that she works with. During that time that she's been with us, she has connected with hundreds of students and has positively influenced them, and they really have received the benefits of her association with them. She's taught with six different teammates and under two principals, and all of us have the utmost respect for her. She's definitely going to be dearly missed. She has a great sense of humor. Sassy as the day is long, so it's always, it's always a pleasure to interact with her, but we're really excited for her to watch this next chapter in her life unfold. Her intelligence, her work ethic, her sense of humor, and, and just all that, all of that that comes with her more has really had a powerful impact for, for us as a staff and as a community, so she will be definitely missed. But she's earned it. She's earned it, and we wish her the best, and she has to come and visit us often, so let's know how good it is. So the next person that I have the honor of recognizing is Susan Slushman. Now Susan's been with us for over twenty years, and she's been a treasure to the Situate Public Schools. Her peers describe her as an outstanding colleague. She's, she's a true friend, and she's an inspiring mentor. As one of her colleagues had actually described her as being a wizard, where she has magic that, you know, that happens every day in the classrooms. She taught her students with never-ending energy, enthusiasm, and creativity. Her relentless determination to unlock every child's potential, both academically and socially, was always the foundation of her philosophy. Susan inspired her students by bringing a deep love of learning directly to them, and even when they were a little bit reluctant. It was those reluctant learners that Susan had the most success with, and she instinctively knew how to reach them. Her insistence and dedication to teaching is genuinely honorable. Susan enriched and indeed loved each and every child in her class. And every one of those students are deeply better people because of your association with her. Although we feel miss Susan's creative creativity is good advice, humorous stories. We're so happy for the adventures that await her in retirement. Lastly, I'd like to honor Rose Fortier. Rose has been a member of the Situate Public Schools for twenty-five years. Twenty of those she had spent pushing school as a paraprofessional. During her time as a parent, she built many strong, supportive relationships with the students. Her commitment to the students has always been unbreakable. Her happy nature and hubris, as I said, and she, along with her versatility, flexibility, and patience, helped each of them grow academically, socially, and emotionally. She positively influenced dozens of students, served her at times as paraprofessionals, both as an in-class paraprofessional and also one-on-one. When I came on board as the principal of Cushing School, Rose became our ten-month student support secretary, which is about five years ago. Now despite the fact that she was not the most tech-savvy person when she took the job, which she was very honest about that, Rose did what was necessary to learn. With a little help from her friends, those teachers we call the dorm room of our specialists, they went above and beyond to help train and help her go from cut and paste to full proficiency on our standard-based system and all of our online software programs. She grew by leaps and bounds. The most powerful attribute that Rosie has is her ability to develop, nurture, and sustain positive lasting relationships. With students, families, and staff, Rose gives you a shoulder to cry on, words of encouragement, and stories and jokes that make you laugh. When you enter Cushing School, Rose is the first smile that greets you. We are so happy for next chapter in our life as retirement, in retirement, but it will be hard to fill her shoes. She is the heart of our school, our friend, and our professional mom. You better make room for at the dinner table, Rosie, because on Sundays I think Cushing feels like you stop by and have a little dinner. So we want to congratulate all three of our members on their retirements and their next adventure.
What do I have to say? First time I've met you all on the first side. And I'm a little like, I don't know, I'm a little taken back, like, it's like, I feel like I'm meeting some celebrities I've seen on Zoom for two years. So, so thank you for having me. Wampatack is saying farewell to three talented and highly respected educators. All three of these women have dedicated many years to the Situate Public Schools and have made a difference in the hearts and minds of our youth learners. Palette Marino joined the Situate Public School System fifteen years ago as a school social worker and then a school adjustment counselor. For twelve of those years, she went between two schools. She's supported students, staff, and families at Cushing, Gates, Jenkins, and Wampatack. Palette has dedicated endless hours teaching students in Situate how to manage anxiety, how to navigate friendships, make good decisions, solve problems, be a kind and supportive friend. She's worked tirelessly with staff, always willing to model social, emotional lessons, share advice on how to mediate students with their relationships, and provide the listening ear if ever needed. Families have been blessed to have her. She is a wealth of information on community resources and parenting advice. Palette will be remembered for her advocacy and her passion for ensuring that every child feels loved and included, not only in our school, but also in our community. We would like to wish her all the best as she begins her next adventure. Carol Sousa has been employed with the Situate Public Schools for twenty-three years. She's worn many hats, including volunteer, PTO parent, school council rep, substitute teacher, one-to-one paraprofessional, long-term sub, classroom teacher, and finally, a reading specialist at Wampatack. Carol's passion for early literacy skills is infectious. She has supported and taught more than seven hundred students to read and write, laying the foundation for them to grow into strong independent scholars. Carol has been a leader in Situate, advocating for school and classroom libraries, early literacy curriculum, and high-quality instruction for our youngest readers and writers. She will be remembered for her dedication to all the students and staff at Wampatack. We would also like to wish her the very best in her retirement. And finally, Izzy Sylvia. She began her career here in Situate at Wampatack, where she has been a teacher for thirty-three years. She started as a K to five bilingual teacher in a self-contained classroom, where she had upwards of twenty students at all different grade levels. After five years, she became a third-grade teacher and eventually ended in the second grade, where she spent most of her career. Izzy has educated and positively influenced well over six hundred students, who lovingly describe her as funny, silly, kind, and smart. She will be fondly remembered for being a collaborative colleague and a fan for her love of all her students. We would also like to wish her the very best in her retirement.
I am here to celebrate Nancy Marshall this evening. Nancy Marshall has worked as a paraprofessional for twenty-one years, almost all of them at SHS. Really cares about and believes in the students that she works with, especially in history, where she supports students most in their history classes, and also one-on-one. She's organized and full of great learning strategies and life lessons that she's willing to share with students. Nancy always lends a hand when she sees someone in need. Her students come to love and respect her because of the strong relationship she builds with kids. She's willing to do whatever it takes for our school and for our students. We know that Nancy is excited to spend more time traveling and relishing in her role as a newer grandmother. She does plan to take us up on the subbing offer. And will be glad to have her back in a different role. But we wish her all the best in her retirement and in this new chapter. Congratulations to Nancy Marshall.
Thank you. And next on each other's celebrating student learning, Hathaway Elementary School.
So this evening, I'm going to have, we have two people that are going to step up, who are going to be presenting. Tonight, Mandy Henry and Kate Pesquetory have worked to talk to you about our social, emotional learning at the Hathaway School. Kate runs as part of our SED team, and Mandy is part of our PBIS team. Two separate teams that then converge, so that we can have, we do part of the social, emotional with the SED team, and then it goes whole school with the PBIS team. And as two extremely important people who really run the school, I gave lots of information for this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to attempt to project my voice, sorry, the allergies have gotten in the vicinity, and share my screen as well.
A little bar is leaving exactly where she wants to be.
Of course I did. It's been a hot minute since we did that, kind of Zoom. Good evening, school committee, superintendent Burkett, and members of the Situate community. Welcome to the celebration of learning for Hathaway Elementary School. As Julie already kind of did our introduction, my name is Amin Henry. I'm a first-grade teacher at Hathaway. I'm part of the PBIS committee. For those of you who don't know, that is, stands for Positive Catering Interventional Support. And I'm also part of the Instructional Leadership Team at Hathaway.
I'm Kate Pesquetory. I teach fifth grade at Hathaway, and as we mentioned, I'm part of the SED team, and I'm up to as well.
It's the last time.
We did.
So thank you for allowing us to celebrate the amazing things our students and staff have been working on this year. During this evening's presentation, we're discussing the collaboration between our PBIS committee and our social, emotional development team, and the many accomplishments of our students and staff and integration.
So it kind of all started a few years ago with we started to do the holistic student assessment that was developed through the Parent Institute and, or the HSA. And initially, the first two years, we only did fifth grade, but this year we introduced fourth grade into it as well, so we have some additional data. And in a more normal environment somewhat, although it was, the survey was completed in the fall. So in case people don't realize, the Parent Institute was developed by Dr. Knoll and started in, at McLean Hospital, and now it's branched out. And what he kind of did was he developed this idea of how we make kids more so resilient in terms of social, emotional skills. And so their goal as an organization is to help teach, how schools teach and support students to become more resilient in the four active areas, the four pieces of the clover, so assertiveness, active engagement, belonging, and reflection. And as you see, there's ages there, and that's just kind of when that specific area is more pronounced in a student's development. Sorry. Perfect. And then, so with this, they developed this HSA survey, and it's a student self-report that measures the kid's social, emotional health. And so our school adjustment counselor gave the survey to all the students. It was the same environment. And then, once we got that data back, in, I think it was about the end of December, we started, or then in November, we started to join, make this SED team, and that team consisted of our school psychologist, our school adjustment counselor, our school nurse, and then several classroom teachers. And the first thing we did was we looked at all of the strengths and challenges as a whole of the school. And the three that really popped were strengths for Hathaway were empathy, relationship with peers, and then also that school bonding, that feeling that they are connected, that I care about my school community. And it was kind of interesting, because once we looked at it globally for all of the elementary schools, these were the three that popped in all elementary schools across the district. And then we also needed to take a peek and look at our challenges. And our challenges that came up were relationships with adults, assertiveness, and reflection. And if you think back to the reflection piece, like, they're still in that development stage. It's a little older, so that's something that comes later for them. The relationship with adults is not only relationship at school, but also in their whole life. So how they use great, um, relationships with all adults. So then, once, and again, once again, these were the three things that popped globally for all the, the schools. So then the next thing we did as the SED team was we looked at, and we identified the kids who may need more support. So using that response to intervention panel, and we addressed the, you know, analyzed scores, saw the kids who we addressed as tier three and tier two. Tier three instruction was school psychologist, school adjustment counselor kind of helping there, planning. And then we took some of those ideas also to tier two and brought them into our classroom with lessons introduction with our school adjustment counselor. And then we looked at that tier one piece, and that's when we kind of worked, decided to work together and identify the challenges and how our PBIS team could help with that. So, on to Mandy.
Our SED team did an amazing job in deciphering the data from our HSA survey. Once challenges had been identified, the PBIS committee was able to create monthly themes based on these indicators. We developed these monthly themes to be our sole focus for our all-school assemblies. Our goal was to focus on strengths and identify challenges. Today, it's a pleasure showing you just a glimpse of what we have been working on these past few months. Our goal with every assembly is to define a theme, provide real-life examples that are relatable, create interactive space for the students in our meetings, and then have students completing activity. During each month, students will also listen along the announcements and discuss the theme. and discuss the theme and provide insight as well. So in February, students were introduced virtually to our first theme. Which was connectedness. We thought this was the best way to bring back our all-school meetings as themes, which if you remember looking back at the positives of HSA, school bonding was one of them. So this was the perfect way that we thought to bring these back. This theme not only helped students feel a sense of belonging, but really helped us within Hathaway to create that homey from home. In this, we looked back to a time where connectedness was a little bit different. And for us, that was the beginning of the shutdown in 2019. For those parents who have Hathaway students, you know that the students received videos of the teachers doing, we're all in this together. And we discussed the lyrics, the lyrics with students and discussed how it connects to being together. We discussed that no matter the circumstances, we were still in it together. That we are subject to celebrating differences and being special in our own way, yet that we still belong as a group. So students enjoyed watching their teachers dance, and they really understood its purpose. So the activity that this month, we created a word chain. Their task was to write how they felt connected to Hathaway on those chains, whether it was a word or phrase. And Mrs. Burton, being our wonderful, amazing, our teacher, she created a wall of hearts to spread love with each classroom as well. You can see some of her students doing that. March's theme was relationships with adults. This indicator was one of our top challenges for students in grades four and five. This is lucky. This was our last virtual PBIS school meeting. We were able to collaborate with important adults in our community to discuss how relationships are important to them and how they've had an impact on them in their lives. We were able to create a video from influential community members, like the lighthouse keeper, Bob Gallagher, Mr. Jermell Adams, Officer Sherry, Ms. Kuzengar, Principal Beatty, and our fire chief, Mrs. Ward as well. The students, for the activities, students then wrote about that they're an important adult in their lives and how they have helped them and support them. April's theme was empowerment. In an effort to increase students' assertiveness, which was an indicator, our April all-school meeting focused on building empowerment. Students groups such as the Lit Group, the recess club, our student government, and our newspaper club presented to students about the ways they show empowerment. This is a way to get our students involved in these meetings and show how they can have a place in our school. Students were introduced to empowerment statements like "I am brave," and "I am strong," and "I can do hard things," and the power quotes, which they all love to do, as a tool to build empowerment. And then complete the activity on when they could use their power poses. These are some pictures of some of our different groups that showed empowerment this month. And here was their activity. It said, "I need to use my power pose when, blank, and because." We wanted them to explain why they needed to use it. So they, they had time for this. In May, we focused on grit. Even though this was not a top challenge, the team thought it was an important theme and a great way to tie in growth mindset. We reflected on empowerment and how that can help us to work through things that are challenging. Students learned about grit and perseverance through some Disney characters portraying grit, Finding Nemo, fabulous show. We had some open discussion during our school in an in-person assembly and practiced our chant to connect to previous ones. You can see we added "I have grit" at the end. Students completed an activity that would help them demonstrate grit. This is the activity that they did. They had to brainstorm things that they couldn't do yet. And then the idea was them to think about the steps that would help them accomplish that. So every grade level had it, and it was different for the grade levels as well. For our final month, we tied in our last indicator of reflection. We took the students outside to learn about reflection and its importance. We discussed tools that can help them reflect in their daily lives, like mindfulness activities, yoga, journaling, art, and just being in nature. We did an all-school stability training and began a meet tree activity to help us further understand reflection. Here's a picture of us outside doing our stability training. They all connected to each other and reflected on things that were important to them.
And there were no trees.
Trees. And this is the meet tree activity. The meet tree is an idea where they were to reflect on things that they were, "I am able to," how they could describe themselves and how they were supported. So they used the branches, the trunk, and the soil to represent things that they were reflecting on. So we wrapped up this year in reflection in this month with, we made memory rocks. We had students look back on their entire school year from academics to all of our PBIS themes and create individual rocks which reflected their favorite memory in school. We took these rocks and recreated a wave of reflection. We added it into the Elaine Shea Garden, which is outside of our school. We thought that this was an appropriate space as it was initially created as a place of reflection. And now our current, our future students and our teachers can use this as a place to reflect. So here are, as our grade three classroom with their memory rocks. Some of the examples said, "Don't give up the ship. If the sun shines, you will too. Smile, don't be anxious. Be yourself, don't be someone else." And these were things that they all thought of. We helped brainstorm the things from the past curriculum, but the idea was they found something that they really wanted to reflect on. And each grade from K to five all did a rock together. Here's our K classroom, one of them, and their rocks. And this is our final project. This is our wave of reflection. So if you're ever at Hathaway, please stop by our reflection space and take a look at our student memory box. Thank you so much for listening to our celebration of learning at Hathaway. We are so proud of our students this year, and they have done amazing things. And this is just one of our examples.
I just, no, I just, I love that Go On Bill is always telling me to be more positive, and I'm trying to be more positive. And I, I really appreciate that this is, this is just a positive. Not only did you give a great presentation and a great overview of what's going on at Hathaway, but it was a positive theme, and you addressed it. And I feel like something that students are proud of, the staff is proud of, everyone involved seems to have a hand in it. To me, that's just exactly what elementary school and district is about. So I appreciate you bringing positivity to this meeting, which we can always use and make me believe that things really are positive in our town. Thank you.
I just want to say, that's another example to me of how there's so much more going on in schools than basic, you know, teaching like Desi is telling you to teach. And there's so much more that goes into the education of our students than what Desi is telling us. But I did have a question about the results of the peer surveys. You said across the district, it was the same in all the elementary schools. So do you have, work with the elementary schools with these projects that you did? Like, do you kind of, are they doing similar activities? Or is it each, each response different?
Each, well, with the HSA, I don't know, I think it's a little more so, because that is the upper grades in our expertise. As regards to PBIS, I think that is more of a school-driven, how we present it. And we just took the HSA results and just thought, these themes would be a perfect way to address in that tier one structure to explicitly teach all of the students and then the group appropriately, and the upper grades would be the tier two, tier three.
Oh, thank you.
I would just love to jump in also and just say that we have a member of our SED team and a member of our PBIS team that's on the district-wide. So those people then come together, look at all of the examples. And then they brainstorm, well, this is what we're doing at Hathaway, we're doing a pushing, so that we can try to pass the rule.
Is this interesting that these elements are like the same from the district?
Yes, yeah, we found that interesting too. Because I'm like a math handler, like that with the advice thing. So I found it so interesting as well.
Yeah, so I'll echo Peter and Janice with the positivity. I can say, without getting too personal, that I've had lots of face time with Mrs. Henry. I know we get lots of emails about frustration, so I want to publicly say what a fantastic experience our family has had with Mrs. Henry and Hathaway in general. So I'll first say that. I do, of course, have some questions. I don't know if these are more, these are probably more at the district level, but if you have thoughts, I'd love to hear it first. I know, Nicole, you and I have talked about the administering of the pair. And I know it happens in the fall, and you got the data in November. I'm curious, is there any talk of re-administering? So we can see like a repost and sort of how students are growing and changing as a result of some of the fantastic interventions that are being done?
I don't think that there is a sample, is there? Right?
Right.
Heidi's saying she can jump in.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm going to interview.
Typically, we went to it once a year, especially at the beginning, so we can drive the meeting throughout the year. We would not want to do a screener a month before a kid's meeting. Because like they mentioned, students often get individual support. We want to be there for them, and we want to get them hooked up with our adjustment counselors. So that's sort of one thing that we do every year. And each year that you compare the grade level to the grade level in November. And our district-wide SED team, Greg and Mary use that. And last year, I actually, I think it was more like April, he presented our district results. And I'd like to give in both of you and everybody else who has been on our district team, because they really have used the data in a way that we're driving activities at every single building, based on, well, I think you can see this, but based on actual information in a consistent way. And if I'm not mistaken, your teams, they led professional development at each building to make sure that students were consistently consistent personally, so thank you.
Just two other, one quick question and then another question. The first one is, and I'm sorry if you've already said this, is this data I saw, that there was a slide up there on the results, is this available to parents, like at a high disaggregated level, that parents could review pair data from the district? Is this available somewhere, or could we make it available? We have de-identified aggregated data by building perhaps?
That's something that we have to look at. I think looking at data in context can be pretty scary. So for example, should we give a wonderful example, relationships with adults? When people read that, is that with teachers, is that with parents? It's a lot more information. Maybe in the future, there might be some more parent education around the administration of the survey and what we do after that. I think that would be something that the district SED team could talk about.
Yeah, I mean, I think just in the spirit of our transparency and educating our community, it would be good to think about ways to share some of the, even if it's a report, right? It doesn't have to be all of the data, maybe a report with some context. The last question is more of a curiosity. I noticed that you added grit into. And I know there's lots of work on grit and sort of the results on grit and the discussion of grit is sort of, there are multiple camps around grit. And so I'm wondering, at the district level, if we're talking about not just preparing students their resilience, but also thinking about the system in which this is happening and whether or not teachers, building leaders are thinking about what in the system is creating a need for resilience? And is there a way to address those barriers? I didn't know if those conversations would be in chat.
And go, just my first point, I think of it as something to build upon and a part of that growth mindset. Because a lot of what I just teach in the younger grade levels is, you know, that's okay to make mistakes, and when you make mistakes, you want to push through those. So tying it into those areas of that growth mindset, and it's okay if you don't know how to do it yet. And so that's kind of how we tied it in specifically at Hathaway Elementary School. And that is part of like, I do definitely agree with what you're saying and how we can present it in that way.
Yeah, great. Thank you both.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for coming. So yeah, this is great. And I'll echo Perry, I mean, it's a, I'll be here for the meeting. That's it, I shouldn't have seen front of all your bosses. Hey, just want to echo, as I see kids, you know, my own kids and kids that they're hanging out with, I mean, they talk about this outside of school. You can see the difference in thinking for them. So, yeah, I know you see it in the school, you get their rocks and everything in the classroom, but they're taking it outside of the classroom, they're pushing it forward, and you can see the enthusiasm down for this. So, yeah, it's, he's doing a lot of great work. Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah. State of the Jake Pilometric School with Beth and Heather. Thank you for having me. So tonight, I'll be speaking about our State of the Jenkins School. We, I'll begin with our mission. We really estratified environment where we're educating the whole student, and we know that is so important, especially re-acclimating students, re-engaging students, connecting families. And we know what goes beyond the walls of our classrooms, so really just engage, re-engaging our Jenkins community. So that's been a big focus this year. It's something that we have been very passionate about. I'm very proud of the staff of the Jenkins School for reaching out, making those connections. And the ways in which they know their students, it's just unbelievable. Our state of the schools, we have our pillars that are connected to educating the whole child. So we have a culture of collaboration, personalization, and personal excellence. So this was right back to our district-wide pillars set forth by Superintendent Burke. Our culture of collaboration highlights. Our data teams, we have implemented with our literacy and math specialists, where we collect data at our benchmarkings, beginning, mid, and end year. We use this data to really drive and visualize instruction, and it allows for us to better know our students in order to meet their needs, again, as the whole child, not just math and literacy, but also the social-emotional development and learning of our students. We have our JAWS program, our Jenkins Awesome Working Students. This is our personalized check-in, checkout program for those students that might need to check in with a preferred person to start their day, end their day. It is focused goals for each student, whatever their individualized needs may be. Students have a sheet where they will take with them throughout the day. And whoever their teacher is, whether it's a specialist teacher, classroom teacher, will fill that out. And the students get to check out at the end of the day, they track their progress. And when some students really get into it, they end up tracking and graphing their own progress, so they can see how exciting it is. And then they can cash in and earn rewards. So that's a way to get students on track, maybe if they're re-acclimating from being out, maybe if they're having a tricky time in the classroom. Just different ways we can support our students there. And that's in collaboration with our school psychologists and also classroom teachers, as well as our adjustment counselor, and then any preferred adults that a student may want. They might want to check in or check out with a custodian. They may want to check in or check out with a teacher they've had in previous years. So it really is cringe and shows to the commitment that all of our staff have to the development of our students. Also, our Lit team, those meetings have been weekly. They've been on Thursday mornings in order to allow equity for all students to participate. So some students, when they get dropped off by car or by bus or their walkers, there's an opportunity for those students in grades three through five to collaborate. It really promotes school-wide opportunities to celebrate the diversity and inclusivity of our community. And then last, you've heard a lot about positive behavior intervention, our PBIS. We have our Sharks, we have our Shark tickets. We have Jen and Ralph, our two Sharks that the classrooms can earn. And it's really exciting to promote the students. We also have the fantastic Shark Award, where we celebrate staff. And it's really important for students to also see staff acknowledging one another. So we not only acknowledge our students, we also acknowledge the staff, and they acknowledge one another. And so they kind of pay it forward with the trophy, and then they get their coffee and their parking spot up front at Jenkins, which, if you know Jenkins, it's nice to have a designated spot in the front. But it's just nice to be able to celebrate everyone and focus on different character traits throughout the year. Students can then turn in their, if they win that month, they can turn in for rewards that are not materialistic, but they're more bonding reports. So it might be flash from the past. You get to go visit a former teacher you've had, or maybe an art teacher. You can be the teacher's helper, have a crazy soft day, but just all different ways to really engage students with their community and have them bonding with other staff throughout the building. So that's kind of nice. Next, we have our culture of excellence highlights. We have our universal screeners for number cents. Our foundations has been amazing. We've seen great, you know, data results. We're getting our end-of-year results in, so we're really excited about that foundations integrity. Again, this is all information that helps us to grow our students. It's systematic. It is a great approach for students to really engage. Um, it's systematic, it is a great approach for students to really engage with words and really understand, um, the foundations integrity with what words mean, how you break apart words. Um, and so they're very excited about it. Um, to the point where we had a teacher homesick and one of the students drew a picture of them doing foundations, but they missed their teacher. So that was in the picture, um, but it just speaks to, um, the excitement the students have for it and what a great job the teachers have done, really fantastic. Um, and then last, for culture of excellence, is our student engagement academy, our C programming this year. I'm really proud of the Jenkins staff that have really put on some wonderful programs this year. Um, I'd say we have about forty-five students per session, anywhere from five to eight programs. Um, from team games, focusing on sportsmanship with our psychologist, which is nice. Um, just a nice way to see staff in a different light. Um, we had our music teacher, had our younger students parading around the building. Um, just really exciting to engage our students, art, music. We had a rock band. Um, at first I didn't know if they wanted to decorate rocks or they wanted a rock band. But they, um, they had their proposal and they came and Miss Lakenna, um, worked with them and they recently performed for the talent show. Um, her son also got involved. So what a great way to also involve students vertically. So that was really a great way, we talk about reconnecting and re-engaging students. Um, that's been really exciting. And there were also some, you know, math support, authors at work, so writing, reading. Uh, so there was such a wide range of activities, we were really excited to be able to support that this year. And then our personalization, our wind blocks this year, um, driven by the data I spoke about in our data teams, have just been amazing. It's a block of time during the day where the students receive their individualized interventions, um, and they're grouped accordingly. We have our benchmarks three times per year, but we are progress monitoring students in between. So we're not waiting for the middle of the year to maybe reassess a student, check and see how they're doing. Um, have they mastered this area? We could move them to a different group. So that's really been an all-hands-on-deck approach within our building to really target, um, all students. So working to advance students, working to support students with specific challenges, um, and everyone in between. So that's been really exciting, um, and I commend all staff with that. That's been professionals, teachers, reading specialists, math specialists, Megan Gregory and Heather Allen, our elementary coordinators. That's just been wonderful. And then care, which we spoke of, really allowed for us to personalize. We dropped that down to the fourth grade this year, so we had more data, uh, starting in the fourth grade. And really share that out with all of the staff, because we know that what we do, from the moment they step foot in the door and students matriculate for our building, it's important for everyone to own that. Um, and all students are all of our students, so we really embrace that. Um, sharing the information to really learn more about students, personalize. If there were students that, um, you know, that opted on the survey individually, um, that we didn't know about or weren't aware of, we were able to better attend to them or could reassess based on their score. Um, getting to grade, um, we are excited for, um, future ELA programming. I know you've heard about different reading pilots, um, so that's been very exciting. The teachers have been wonderful, Megan Gregory's done an excellent job leading that. But we had so many teachers that wanted to pilot, it was just very exciting for the teachers wanting to be involved, um, and really setting a stage for everyone to have a voice in that and doing those. The next piece, which is so important, is connecting our community. We had families that have moved in, um, through the pandemic and we're trying to work to connect them. Um, I know our P T O has also been working hard to just have events to get to know families, bring people together, um, at no cost. So they've been trying to do just a wide range of things that just can bring people together. And something as simple as, um, afternoons meet at our playground. So they had by grade level each week, kindergarten one week, incoming kindergarten, current families come. And just what a nice way for the kids to play together, parents to engage, and families to just feel like they're part of that community. Um, and then our cultural proficiency, continuing to learn and grow. Um, work with Jamil Adams, our D E I director. Um, we are very fortunate to have a metro program here, it's wonderful, um, with Darryl Faden and Marcus Hadeas, wonderful. Um, so just working together to really, um, grow and learn together, um, and really enhance what we're doing and make sure we're really including and mindful of everybody's needs. Thank you, that's our overview. Um, great things are happening at Jenkins, um, as you can see here at the garden, we painted a map out on the laptop. Um, that was a nice activity, we had all ages from ages three to seventy-three out helping us paint that. It was just a nice way to bring people together. Our shipshape day, um, we have Mr. Adams coming to visit for lunch to connect the students in a variety of ways in the classroom as well. Um, we have Maggie, who the students enjoy reading to her and engaging with her, the therapy dog we have. Um, and it's just been great to see kids back together, playing, engaging, um, and really embracing new families as well. Thank you, Dr. Lo. Questions, comments?
Uh, I guess, um, because I, I just think that, congratulations to you on getting the position.
Thank you.
Um, I just, I'm not sure exactly, what is the grade level that you're going to be principal of, high school or don't mention?
Um, it's grades two through five.
Right, perfect, leading to my question. Um, obviously, there's great things going on at Jenkins. Um, I'm wondering, kind of what initiatives or what things that you're doing here are you going to bring with your new job? Like what things that we do, that you can situate, that you might want to implement at your new school? So I think that ultimately speaks to what, what we're doing and what specifically we're doing at Jenkins.
Right. Um, I will say that we are leading the charge, I think, in our D E I work and our cultural proficiency. I know when we meet, um, with, I was on a literacy council meeting, which is a great thing about Zoom, you can meet with people across the state, um, and, oh, how do you do that? How do they invest in that? Where are you with this? And it's just very exciting and proud to be able to know that we have, um, these supports in place. And so I think advocating for these roles that can do that work and get the job done in a collaborative manner. Um, because we want to do everything and we want to do everything well. And I think it's, we're very fortunate to have the supports in various areas. You guys, we wanted them. Um, another area is our structure for our wind blocks. Um, we have a great structure with, um, you know, Megan Gregory, um, and Heather Allen with our math and literacy, and really working with that model of literacy specialists and math specialists to then work with the teachers. So it's having those supports, um, for teachers, the coaching of teachers, um, and really just being present, being able to be in the classroom with them. Um, so that's something I've been very proud of, very excited, um, the work with our data teams. Um, that contributes to the wind blocks and, um, just different things our P T O has done to engage. Um, I'm just very excited and fortunate to have had this experience here. Um, it was a really hard decision, but I, um, I look forward to my next adventure. But there are certainly lots of great relationships and so much that I appreciate.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I want to just thank you for your service as well and wish you the best in your next adventure. Um, I'm curious if you had an opportunity to give us some advice moving forward? Um, where would you like to see us spend our time in the, in the next year? Where should we, where should we be focused?
Oh.
Isn't it, I, I mean, we talked about reflection in the last presentation. I'm asking you to reflect on your experiences and what's a lesson or two you've learned that you'd like to see happen in the next year.
I think, um, we have absolutely amazing staff in every area, um, from parents, custodians, teachers. The investment and the commitment to that staff, um, the excitement of rolling out, for example, a new reading program. Um, that is so exciting, um, we're excited for that. Um, I just think that will all enhance the work we do. And I would think continuing to pull the four elementary schools even closer together. Um, we've worked very hard, um, since, um, we've come together a few years ago, um, and then we welcomed Tracy. And we work very hard to provide those consistent opportunities for our students without taking the culture away from our individual buildings. And so, um, that is something that I hope will continue. Um, but I, we do value that culture of individualized buildings. And so it's important to find that balance, um, but we've worked very hard. So that's something I'd like to see continue to grow and I know people continue working very hard on that.
Well, well done on that beginning.
Um, you know, you, um, you, one of your last comments was about how nice it was to see all the kids coming together and get, you know, in the picture. And I had a flashback of me, I mean, you gave me a tour of Jenkins, what it would look like. In, you know, how, yes, we separated and like, this is, you know, how far we've come.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, great presentation, thank you. And I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Yeah, losing, really great presentation, please.
Thank you.
But, I mean, you know, I always wish everybody the best, so lucky to have you.
Thank you, great. For sure, thank you, Dr. Lo. Um, yeah, I agree, I feel like the community building you've been doing has been, it's like unexpected work over the past two years. But I feel like individually, I totally agree with your answer to Carrie's question. Like individually, you've all had to climb that community building hill from nothing to where we are. And then the next step is to become closer as a four elementary, so appreciate your, that's what I'm hoping to do. Thank you. Bennett Burkhead, presentation on thought exchange results.
So, um, I want to thank everybody for their patience, the thought exchange was a little while back, maybe a few weeks. And, um, it was our first one, and sure, and I'm very impressed with the response. And moving away from the traditional surveys to a more interactive, uh, model, seems that proved to work very well. So it's nice, kind of the first step, giving a high-level overview of what we've found in the survey and, um, a first step into us to start that conversation about, you know, what's important to us, how we phrase that first question, what are some traditions we want to keep here, what's new things we'd like to start here, um, and the things we'd like to start. And so we're going to, we're going to tell the listeners tonight to share that. And on Wednesday, we'll be sharing the breakdown with our principals per building, which we break it up many ways. Uh, they'll be using this information, um, to make decisions on their school improvement plans or goals, all those types of things, dealing with students, there's some low hanging fruit that we can incorporate right away. Um, for example, a number of things kids said, you know, moving into next year. We've got a really good student response, there's some examples there. District will do the same thing, be using this information over the summer in our conversation, in our summer retreat, um, to help us better decisions. And even from this, this will allow us to, okay, what more refined, uh, questions can be asked? As you know, it's one question, a couple of sub-questions that I'll share, some of the results we have tonight. And on Thursday, this Thursday's thoughts, we're going to send the whole thing all forward to the community. So we'll give them the breakdown, then you'll have all the results. So I want to spend some time on it, it's pretty fascinating to see. And just for those that aren't familiar with it, may not have had the chance to participate, encourage you in the future to do so. Uh, it's an opportunity for you to, uh, go on there and respond to a question, um, and then to rate other comments on there. That allows us to kind of see the validity of something. So if someone makes a comment, uh, ten, twelve people respond to it, it's all one star, then that doesn't have a big point to it. Whereas, cream rises to the top, we found that, you know, that's what I'll share tonight, is our top responses, uh, what our community thinks, at least in this particular, uh, exchange felt were the most important things right now to me. So it's, it's really good stuff, it's fascinating. Again, um, whole concept here is to get this conversation going as we move into our strategic planning next year. Want, um, everybody's input, up with the community plan for our district. It's great timing, so it's a good first, soft launch into that. So, uh, turnout, just to show here, um, again, by far our highest turnout participants were two hundred and twenty-two. Uh, you can see even more thoughts were shared. Some people don't, you don't have to share thoughts, you can share as many as you want, so that, that brings. But if you look at the ratings, that's pretty incredible. I think that's where this, um, software, this kind of mode really taps into people's ability to kind of participate, share what's important to them. So almost a hundred thousand of those, so that's pretty fascinating. I want to thank everybody that was, took the time to do this, because it's a really important information to have. Here's the breakdown, again, really balanced, you know, community members. Obviously, when we start talking M S B A things, the building project, we have a higher number there. It's more focused on a narrow, uh, school group. Still had twenty participants, but that was great. Students, high number, that was our middle, high school students. We did this during school day so that we give them the opportunity to have, to take the time to participate. And that's why the number's so high and so important to us. And then again, the parent caregiver and staff are over fifty percent of those. Better? Appreciate that, yeah? Thank you. I'll just go back real quick, because in case you see that, that's the breakdown by respondents. Okay, uh, again, you'll, you'll have a copy of this, everybody's below.
Can I turn this? Yeah, I'm asking because I don't think we've dropped it over. Buy a new screen for this little.
It wasn't obsessed by you, mom, it's like, is that better?
Yes. Sorry.
I can either show me credit, what's your name, sir?
Uh, Jacob.
Jacob? Get rid, Van away to run for money, coming up and just not on, I'm going to have you, if you are awkward. All right. Uh, so, this was an interesting question, we wanted to, you know, this wasn't a major question, but a very important one. We wanted to put it as a sub-question that, you know, get our best bang for our buck. And we talked a lot about belonging, especially during COVID and, you know, with so much pressure and sadness out there. We wanted to get a pulse for, um, what, what did community and students felt about a sense of belonging safe included in that. You know, cornerstone, they weren't really working, spending a lot of time. So these numbers are good, it can be better, and that's our goal, is, you know, asking the same question next year and seeing the increase in these numbers. You know, uh, other respondents, again, almost a, um, nine hundred here. Uh, we are strongly, strongly agree, which is, uh, sixty-six percent. The neutral category, we'd like to see that move up to the agree or strongly disagree. And although the disagree and strongly disagree are lower numbers, they're too high. Any, any numbers there we want. So we want that eight, eight percent to be zero, you know, moving forward. So, uh, again, we could break down to see, we answered those questions in-house, just to try to start focusing on that. That's a really important one for us. This is just kind of a word cloud on some of the words that are most common in this, just to get an idea. Look at that. So, this is an interesting one. Here are like the top three thoughts. Personally, I received the highest mark, you can see the rankings, one, two, and three. Uh, continue emphasizing the value of kindness and empathy. Uh, we have the ability to help our students be more than scholars, we can help them become responsible caring people. That's huge, and that's the, that's the whole child that we talk about, and it's so important. And I think we, we need to model that as adults, not only as staff members, but as community members. So that one really stood out, as you can see, a lot of people felt that way and that was number one. So we'll be working on continuing that. Uh, demonstrate respect for students and staff. Again, another, better respect one, feelings one, uh, was number two, which is very important. So again, we'll continue to work on that, but we want to share that with the community. And then, uh, shout out to our highly qualified teachers. Uh, that's, that's really great to see that in the community, that was number three, top choice. And we want to keep our great teachers and keep supporting them, so those are the top three. Then here, are just some of the, a different way to show some of the trends that were coming out. And I believe when you get this.
Yeah, so these are, um, some of the, um, generated themes that came up. Um, the automatic intelligence that they pull those out and sift through all those comments in a way that leaned on. And, um, it was determined that those were the most common themes out of the entire thought exchange. So when you get your results, your own report of it, in the Thursday thoughts, you'll have this image and you can click any one of those and see every single thought and its rating that goes along with that.
Thank you. Yeah, so that, I, I won't do that tonight. You'll have the ability Thursday to dig into these. Backpacks are important too, which I guess to a lot of middle school kids, uh, with their parents, that was big there. So click in, you get to see that. So a very fascinating way to do that, uh, so you can spend some time in there and see all the thoughts. The Labor Day was another interesting one. We had talked about that, do we start school before or after Labor Day? I'm going to say it's close to fifty-fifty split. So it's a good way for us to know, all right, we want to tackle that in the future, it's going to be a split down the middle. You know, what do we do with that? So, pretty good information, and again, that was a question that was just here with us. So here's some unifying things, they do have a Venn diagram, you're not familiar with those? You've got some outlined things on each end and where are the things that are kind of overlapping, common in a lot of the things? The responses. And what are the things that are kind of overlapping, common in a lot of the things, the responses? These float into the top of those. These are things that people in general pretty much in unity behind. Um, professional development was a big one for our staff. Uh, studying professional development inspires teachers to strengthen the content knowledge and craft. Motivation, get fired up, get excited again, you know. Uh, so point well taken. Working on that. That was great to know. Uh, going down, we should continue to grow community acceptance for all in a safe harbor in which all students feel comfortable to learn and grow. Uh, acceptance on all fronts, race, creed, LGBTQ, plus developmentally, those with special needs, all needs and happiness and success among persons. So that is an inclusion one. And the communication is key. Again, a goal of ours next year moving forward to even communicate stronger, more openly, and to have it two ways, to have feedback, ongoing dialogue, um, to build trust and transparency. And a lot of people believe that to be true. And the last one, we must continue to invest our, our facilities with two brand new buildings. Um, we need to ensure maintenance, innovative and technological advances, buildings need to be consistent. It's not wasting our investment. Good point, as people may or may not know, we started our first, uh, along that line, first maintenance line item is we had the schools at a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year ago. This year, we've doubled that to four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, on the school side, to do just that, take care of our things, play, write, fix them. So that we're not going back to the town to always bail us out, get new buildings. Right? So I just want to share that with people. But that's good information to have, and that we are following up on that. So our next steps, I gave a little bit of insight into this at the beginning. Uh, develop our strategic, strategic plan to drive our school and district initiatives. Share breakouts by building with principals for analysis and consideration and share this with the community through our Thursday thoughts. And then I just welcome the community as you digest this and see this. If anything sticks out to you that you want to have a conversation about with your teacher, your principal, your office, we're very open to that conversation, um, to make that district, you know, the best that we can. That concludes my presentation.
So, and it says, um, participants fourteen, I did, sorry, can't. Go ahead, sorry, we five. Okay, I just have some questions. Um, so if what the, you have a breakout of participated. Are you able to, um, see what those particular, um, like parent caregiver, like what they commented about?
Yes. They can break it up into separate groups, separate students from parents and teachers.
And, um, the student belonging. I'm just curious if, who, like, the answer to those questions, like, if there are any, because there's a lot that, you know, and a hundred and fourteen percent is strongly agree, um, so I was just curious if, you know.
Yeah, so we'll have that detailed data, and that's the one that's going out to the principals. If you look at, so we'll look at the district level in general. How many kids said they were strong, and there's a lot of parents make out like that. So we'll do that, dive into it, make decisions. And then, and that's also very important. We have all access to them.
Because I'm just curious, like, if you have a community member that doesn't have, you know, students in the school, you know, do, what is their thought? Like, do they think that, you know?
It's a percentage.
Yeah, what is the perception?
Right. Well, I want to do that.
No, that's, I mean, that was one of the questions I had was I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure what we're learning from that question without breaking it out. So I would like to see, see it breaking out. The fourteen, twenty-two, I assume those are unique participants?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, um, the other question I had is when it says key unifying themes, um, do you know what criteria is being used to determine that these are unifying versus some other theme that might see you have that?
Yes, so for example, Bill, um, he shared the Labor Day issue, right? So half of the people said, we love to start before Labor Day. Half the people said, we love to start after Labor Day. A unifying theme is something that two groups of people disagree on a particular topic all agree on. So those unifying themes are themes that bring groups that disagree on other topics together. So those were pulled out for some of our common themes that you saw in that chart that you liked to do. So each of those had a, had a.
So is that, when you think about how you're going to use the data, is your priority unifying themes?
I would say it depends on the building. This is such a huge, uh, I mean, it's a gigantic amount of information. We need the principals to sort of digest it and break it out and ask questions. And this is just the whole picture. Um, so right now, we know this will inform our strategic plan. We know there will be more specific thought exchanges. So in the future, we may have a thought exchange, like Superintendent Kirk had said, specifically on items about the building project. Specifically on feelings about certain decisions we need to make. And what's great about the thought exchange is if we do a survey, when we get the survey results without fail, we say, we wish we would have asked this question. Now that we're analyzing it, we wish we would have heard this. The thought exchange allows everyone to give their actual unique opinions um, about whatever the topic is. So we really think that using this and finding our stride with it, it's going to be really helpful to me. Um, everyone's voice is heard in the, uh, in the group decision. Oh, I was just going to ask you, thank you. My comment was about finding a stride. I think, um, in terms of, it was really neat and innovative. And it's fantastic that we're using it. Um, personally, I got, there were like some thoughts that came out that I felt I wasn't qualified to give my opinion on. Like, well, you know, it was like a teacher related PD piece. I have an opinion on it, but I'm not living that. That's just not my, you know, I was kind of blind as a parent, basically. Um, and I know Peter actually helped me figure out how to give it basically, like you could say, or whatever it was. But maybe, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but maybe others felt, um, you know, a little, so if we could do kind of finding a stride thing. Now I, now that we've done it once, I understand that kind of stuff, we're working on it. But if, as we get to those more specific questions, like things on school building project. I feel like if we can do more soft ones even, softball ones, that would help the community, parents, everybody get a feel for how the system works more. Because they're definitely in the learning curve. Because it's a unique system for feedback. We used to go to surveys at most points. This is ten times better, but it's a lot to, to learn. So that would be my opinion.
Thank you. That's so awesome.
This is a piece that.
Yeah, I would agree.
It was like three dots and they.
At least on your phone, I think it was the phone that asked, made it difficult to kind of skip over a question or a thought that it wasn't relevant to you. So it was easier just to answer it.
Yes, but sometimes my event wasn't helping. I have, you know, I'm, we're not at the PD, so we shouldn't be answering those questions.
I might have just thrown the phone. I don't, I think I was.
Yeah, maybe it was just sound. It was fantastic. I thought it was possibly interesting reading comments too. Yes. Yeah.
Are there any other districts that are using this kind of technology? Do you know? I think they, we did mention.
They're pretty, pretty in Massachusetts.
Right. Yeah. Uh, now school improvement plans, uh, it's the market. Oh, okay. And, oh, my days. I didn't know if you're all doing it individually, or if you're going to do it as a team or a, as a, as a team or a group of parents and sisters and brothers. We do everything together.
They'll have in your backup this presentation, but then we'll share what you think.
Yep. So, good evening. Good evening. Um, this evening we are going to present together, just Rebecca just, Dr. Wong, just did her state of the schools report. And it's pretty amazing to sit and listen. I feel like the Haveli School has its own unique culture. And I'm sure that Pushing and Bombetuck and, um, Jenkins feels the same way. But yet, the information that was all presented, we tried to give a little spice so that it wasn't all the same exact. But it's really important, hard to be consistent. So last time as a team, um, we will be presenting our school improvement plans together. So, um, just some pictures from all of our schools. Our kids are really cute. Yes. And don't you love that they all, they all have similar things, similar pictures, similar activities that they're all doing? We worked on our school improvement plans. We did a two-year plan. Um, and we followed right along with the, um, improvement plans for the district. We worked, we always work together to try to make sure that our goals and all of our action steps fall under the, the, um, district plan. If you then look at our own personal goals, you can see that those also fall under our, our school improvement plans. Um, in that we, for instance, we speak every Monday morning. Um, and that is just to calibrate for the week and be like, okay, this is what we're doing, right? Um, we keep saying we're going to have coffee hour. We get to have coffee, but we have a lot to talk on every single Monday morning. Um, so the last piece is just, we each have our own school council that we work on. Um, we have, each have our own school councils. Um, our school councils are made up of, uh, school staff as well as parents, community representative. Um, and one of you sits on each of our, um, councils. We, uh, ensure that the, we have the same number of staff as we do parent, um, involvement. Because it's important that we have a balance when we're making decisions. That school council is a place that we can go to, to make sure that we are discussing things that are happening within our schools. And that is really where we talk about the goals for our school improvement plans.
So the first pillar of culture and collaboration, personalization. Dr. Wong had gone through her state of the schools. Uh, we've all done our state of the schools and it, you might have heard some very similar themes and, and, you know, mirrors of, of what's happening in each school. So this is going to be somewhat of a repeat of what you've already heard, but we do consistently do this across all of our elementary schools. Um, we do, you know, to grow a safe and welcoming environment for all students and staff at the elementary level where everyone feels comfortable, valued, included as equal members of the larger community. We talked a little bit about our HSA and, you know, and data that we do use for that. Um, some of the other things that we have incorporated into all of our schools is our lit teams. We may, we try to do a lot of some of the similar experiences across the elementary schools, but also being, understanding the, uh, the unique cultures of each of our buildings and our communities. Um, our students have really worked very closely with Doc, uh, Jamil Adams. And, um, and like in Pushing, we have, right, um, Megan Gregory, who and Erin Camden, who work very closely with us. So each of us have staff that work with our students. And it's really our students' voices that come through for our lit teams. And, um, are able to provide some, um, cultural experience or some understanding versus some education that's directly related to what voices are about children. And it's been, um, very unique and also really interesting to hear what's important to them and then be able to bring it across the schools. We all have weekly wellness meetings that take place. We meet with our, on a weekly basis with our school psychologists, our adjustment counselors, um, our nurses. Oftentimes we'll have some unique, or, um, individual educators or support staff that might attend those meetings. Because what we're doing is we're talking about children and, and really focusing and concentrating on the whole child, how we can best meet those needs. Always making sure that those children might need a little extra support and some areas are on our radar. While also celebrating successes we've been having with the students throughout the year. We have, each of us has members, um, a member from our staff who are on the social, emotional, school-based teams. We have an SED team within our buildings, and that also expands, um, into the district level. And it really is communication back and forth on all levels so that we're promoting, um, social, emotional well-being and development of the students. Um, and that we're doing it whether we're secondary or an elementary model. Uh, pair data has been shared by our entire staff. You know, it, what was nice is when we received the pair data, um, our school adjustment counselors, those who were responsible for really taking a look at it, we all kind of dispersed and talked specifically for children. Might, you might have, you know, had some flags on to, to address those needs for those kids right away, having, uh, conversations with our grade levels. Um, and then of course, bringing it out to the greater population of our staff. Because even though this, the data of the survey is taken from students who are in fourth and fifth grade, ultimately, they are, their thoughts and their ideas and what they're, they're sharing with us goes down to the K level. And, and we want to make sure that if we're seeing children in fourth and fifth grade who are, um, maybe struggling or having challenges, that we're also working with it on a key to free, avoid, um, maybe future problems. So all of our, you know, this is incorporated into all of our school improvement plans. Um, and it, it really is something that as a team, as an elementary team, is first and foremost for us. And our school adjust, our school councils have been imperative in helping us to build these, our, our goals toward, you know, underneath this building. We'll add the PBI.
PBI, I see. I've heard a lot about that soon, but it's just something that's really important too. We all have, we each have it in our buildings. Again, it's our own character, our own, um, culture of our buildings with that. But it is something that really has brought our students together and staff and just re-engaged everybody if you will.
So the second pillar is the culture of excellence. And so I just want to reiterate that when you look at our individual school improvement plans, you'll see that the language might be a little bit different, but really the big idea and the goals are similar. So the goal is, um, that we're going to continue to analyze a variety of data points, even our understanding of students' individual strengths and challenges in order to be the personalized team for our students. A win, block, work in conjunction with the tier one instruction to show growth in math, reading, special bear, star, and math. So, um, at each building, you will see, and you know, we've talked a lot about this, that we are working on, um, adopting a new reading program, which has been, um, much needed for a long time. And just like Rebecca said, to try, to continue to try to pull our elementary students together, this is going to be a big pull together. Um, so that, um, our, all of our elementary students will have a similar experience regardless of which building they're in when it comes to academics and specifically in reading and writing instruction and other things. Um, we've also, as you know, um, adopted a new math program, ECA, which, um, last year was the first year with that program, which we were in a very unique year last year, right? So, so we need to continue to review and calibrate that program and make sure that our teachers, um, continue to just deepen their understanding of how that program works and how it's into the Massachusetts reading standards. So we don't, just because it's there and in place, we don't want to forget about, we need to continue to calibrate that. Um, we've also, all are working on collecting feedback from our students who are all using the same universal screeners. This year, we added, um, universal screener for numbersets, which is a one-to-one interview with students. I know we've all talked about that in our state of the schools. Um, it's exceptional. It's a great, great screener, um, that gives, um, really, really interesting data on how kids think about, um, problem-solving. Um, we're also using all the foundations. We're all using foundations. We're using those screeners, um. And I think, um, Rebecca just talked about that earlier at her state of the schools. We're all using Hegerday. We're all using STAR, um, and Symphony, and we're all using TIPS. So we're all using the same screeners in every, um, building. Um, we are using, um, data meetings to ensure that each and every student's growth is closely monitored. Um, this year, three of us participated in a testing training on the tiered system of support. Um, and how to, um, effectively use data meetings within our buildings. Um, Rebecca talked a little bit about this. I keep referring to her because she's in her state of the schools. Um, but I found it very refreshing that in that training, sometimes I get a little reluctant about going to these trainings, about feeling overwhelmed and like, oh my gosh, there's so much we need to do. But I really felt like we were in a great place. So, um, we participated with, um, over a hundred people from across the state. And I really felt proud of how our long situat is in that process. Um, but it was great because three of us participated. And so we've had a lot of conversation about what that looks like in our buildings. Again, to make sure that we are, um, using data meetings and using data consistently across all four buildings. Um, and then of course, the wind blocks, we've talked a lot about that. I know you've heard a lot about that. Um, again, that's in your building. That's a great way, you're targeting students, um, with specific learning goals to what their needs are. Um, those, those groups are all flexible. They're. Um, those, those groups are all flexible, they're fluid, they're changing all the time. Um, teachers are on board, teachers have embraced it, um, and it's been really seeing, um, a lot of effective growth in that way. Um, and then, um, I will just say one last thing here is, um, I know for me, when I presented my state of the schools, um, I was asked, what does excellent look like? What does excellence look like? I think we've all been asked that, including Superintendent Burkhead. And it's something that honestly I've thought a lot about and I do think about it every time we do a data meeting or a grade level meeting. And I always come back to it because I like to keep things simple and not too, um, complicated. To me, it comes back to that every child gets what they need. So that when they leave our elementary schools, they are all meeting the standards and they are ready for sixth grade. So when they enter gates, everybody is on grade level and prepared to enter that next chapter into the school. So to me, um, that is what excellence looks like and I feel like we are in a good place in heading to that.
The better we calibrate, the better we can support going into the sixth grade when now it's more equitable for all students and we can just, uh, create support them because we have more common data points, which is exciting.
The update, um.
I guess I have one thank you all for that presentation. Like last, I don't know, it was one year we had all the principals together. This is great. You just never really see all the guys. Or two-thirds of our principals, well, thank you all for coming together. Um, I guess the question I have is, I, I'm totally fine with it, but I just, I have to ask a question. I know that there's focus on, um, having students, um, meet the standards in grade five. But what are we doing for those students who are outperforming the standards already? How are we supporting that?
Wind block is set up so that we are also helping, um, students who need enrichment, who are always ready, meeting those standards. I can go higher. For instance, in Kinyon this year, we had a group of students who worked, um, in a chapter. They were ready, right? There were books that they could handle. So wind block, and one of those.
I mean, I can speak to that as well. I had several teachers just in their, um, goals for this year. Their goals focused on that students, like those students that, that need to, um, go above beyond or need to accelerate public standards. And then I'll give you an example. In second grade, we had homeworked kids that, um, were, um, in a pre-test in the Eureka Math Program. They, on the pre-test, they had scored eighty percent or higher. So, um, they still participated in the tier one, like the whole group lessons. But they were getting, they were given a project base to, um, to take those skills and go above the standards. So, um, and then they, um, they actually pulled from multiple classes, so those kids worked together. Um, and then they did a presentation, which I found a lot of going to, um, and it was exceptional. So they're, they're working on the same standards, right? But they're going, um, kind of taking a step further than is that.
I appreciate it. And obviously we know we need to focus on all students, but we do spend a lot of time and discussion on supporting those that are most in need. So it's nice to hear that those students who may not need the support, but have the opportunity to, to progress at their appropriate level. Thank you.
I just to add to that because I think at the elementary level, um, our educators are really experts in differentiation. So you, when you think differentiation, you're often thinking intervention. But that differentiating, differentiation goes from those children, you know, who might be in one level and those in the other, and then expanding. It's not as if we're trying to go to the next grade level. We're really expanding, helping them to think outside the box. But our elementary educators are really, um, that, that's their forte, that they're really, really good at doing that. Um, so it is nice, the wind blocks have really offered us an opportunity to do that. And then, you know, even though it was a, an outside of school program, an after-school program, we see, you know, situat education academies who are instrumental in helping to address a lot of those children who are ready for more. Then, then, you know, maybe some others. So that has been just a wonderful offering for us.
Great, thank you.
And a couple of questions. So can you extend a little bit just on the process with like this pillar two? As you're going, just having kids, you know, musical and juvenile from the backgrounds of having just occurred to me, they're support screen, kind of put in place for them as they go into the summer or, you know, if they consider conceding. Is there anything that we do that we say, hey, we'll be sending this one to the summer? Um, we've spotted on those specific steps that are succeeding.
Well, I know that our curriculum coordinators right now, from working with our town library, um, they just recently sent us some emails in order to, you know, get our feedback on some of the initiatives and the things that they'll be sharing with the public to help our students to continue their learning so that they won't have, it's been traditionally thought of as a summer slide, where, um, you know, you might, there might be a loss of learning, not such a loss of learning, just kind of a gap. So, um, our, our curriculum coordinators have worked very closely with us to be able to help support that. I also know that they work with our public librarians to again, um, provide some extra support or ideas, um, to help further their, um, their students, actually, you know, their students' experience during the summer. So there's, we have, there are games and, and what's nice is like our math specialists have come up in, with, with games and activities and things that are just, things that parents can do to help to support the mathematical growth and learning of students. And it's the same thing with literacy and with writing and, and they're just quick little ideas and snippets. But, um, you know, that's something that's gonna be posted on to our webpage as well as shared, you know, wherever it needs to be. And, you know, even during the summer, um, there's always somebody that you might be able to reach out with and ask some questions. So those are some of the supports we're already putting in place and we've already begun, um, getting everything ready for that last year of school. Shipped a lot of stuff, yeah.
That's a great answer. I can ship that. And even like at the Halden Report last week, there were a lot of, you know, stations in the cafeteria. And I think my kids brought on five different types of, you know, some of the math programs and reading programs. And it's like, what we can push that out is often is for parents of the summer, because it's, it's gonna prevent that slide that you were talking about.
Right. And I think it's really important for parents to understand that it is not, it's not a hard thing. It's not school. It's not like sitting down and all of a sudden, you know, we were in the pandemic and we were teaching higher parents where they spent a lot of time doing a lot of the teaching. But there's a lot of fun, wonderful activities that can be done with children just on the fly that's gonna help to support their learning. So we want to also make sure that families understand that it can happen to be hard, which is that, so it's not a big challenge.
Um, might be also talking with just the conversation that happened as the creators of OpenCage or the communication back with students coming up or just, you know, feedback in the first couple of months, you know, here's how the army's sixth graders are doing and testing or, um, like we've got a way of putting it like, you know, here's some things that we want to make sure that we focus on, make sure that as kids went to middle school or to high school, you know, they're prepared to succeed in this program.
So are you talking, um, about just the transitional conversations we have prior to them getting to the sixth grade?
Yes.
Um, that is actually something that all four elementary schools do on a regular basis. We're coordinated with principal meeting, um, and with, um, this, this Lesniak, I have a school adjustment council that's over there. But they have standard meetings with our grade levels. Um, and we start those conversations, I, you know, I can speak from pushing that we're, you know, we'll have our, our Google Doc and, you know, you have the initials of the children and maybe some, just some things to keep forward. Um, but those conversations occur naturally, probably starting May is when we start having those conversations. We talk about, um, you know, not only the academic aspect, but we're also talking about some of these social emotional needs of our students and some of the students we, you know, are there some good pairings, help with some positive relationships, one of some of the things that we're doing. And although we, we don't necessarily talk about specific teams or teachers, we always try to make sure that we share with, um, with the Gates team, you know, what are some, what are some of the instructional strategies or, or the types of personalities that a child can be successful with? So those, if you are already ongoing for children who are, um, you know, we have children who might be on IEPs, um, those are gonna be discussed at an annual meeting as well. Um, and our school adjustment council is often have those personal, um, conversations or, or meetings with families and maybe with the Gates team. So those are, you know, for students who might have a lot of anxiety, head students who want to up to gates and visit with our school adjustment council, our school psychologist and with families. And in terms of meeting these teams, they've been really great about, um, doing everything that we can to help to comfort and transition from the elementary, State Harbor Elementary to, um, Gates, which is, it's just a bigger school with a lot more, a lot more kids, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just want to comment that it's just so, you know, there were many years that we, part of the conversation was iron all the elementary schools feeling the same. So it's so great to see them working here, presenting how the goals and plans are mechanical. Yet you still have the individual validity of each school, um, in that community. So I just wanted to thank you for this.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions for our educated emotion group in pushing? All right. Call paper.
Hi.
And do I have a motion to have a meeting over these?
We're creating a Halden Report on these programs.
Okay, call it paper.
Right.
And to vote for Jennings.
I think it's all these programs.
Second. Call paper.
Alright.
And last but not least, walk talk on the next school.
Yeah, tour for the floor, talk on the next school.
Call paper.
Alright.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
I almost was gonna say, we do that. All right, Mr. Beatty, Gates Middle School.
So thank you for having me tonight, uh, to share the Gates Middle School School Improvement Plan. Um, this plan was developed by our school council, so I wanted to take a minute to thank Lauren Battali, Elizabeth Horn, Julia Swinler, Julie Dimas, Meredith Nelson, Celine Boden, Val Baker, Nancy Driscoll, Jay Gillespie, Amy Heffernan, Mike Long, Tammy Rundle, and my assistant principal, Sam Lesniak. Uh, we began drafting this plan at the very beginning of the year. Uh, and what we did was we took the two district pillars, um, here, uh, the culture of excellence and the culture of personalization and collaboration. And we said, what at Gates, uh, do we want to do? What is the work we want to do to further the work, um, of our school that align very nicely with the pillars of the district? And so our first goal that we drafted and came up with was by June of this year, we will have examined and restructured our systems and past practices aimed at promoting excellence and improving learning and growth to meet the diverse needs of students. And so we looked at various, uh, systems and structures that we have in place. Uh, we collected some data to say what's working and what's not working. And then we made refinements, uh, to just make it even better. So the first process we looked at was our response to intervention process. Uh, we used the, um, presentation delivered by special education, uh, special education director, Dr. Michelle Boebert. Um, and we said, how do we take our existing RTI process and make it better? Um, we worked this year with our faculty. Um, every member of our school is a part of a response to intervention team. And our goal through this process is to design interventions, academic interventions, social emotional interventions, uh, to target growth in a specific way. Um, over the years, we have, um, focused more on the process and less on the outcomes. And this year, we really took it, uh, to the next step and said, what are the outcomes that we want? Um, eighty-two students as a result went through the RTI process, uh, in grades six through eight. Um, and I don't have necessarily summary data because each intervention is different because each area for growth, uh, is different. Uh, but we have developed kind of a response intervention bank of resources so that next year, when we're working with an individual student, we don't need to start from scratch because each student, um, is starting in one place and kind of moving to the next. The next system we looked at was our ELA and math literacy program. Um, and we wanted to provide more individualized support to students who needed extra support in both literacy and math. Um, and this was the topic of our school committee presentation in March. Um, so if you recall back to there, we had our literacy and math specialists discuss that we adopted a new progress monitoring tool this year called IXL. Um, IXL provides us kind of a snapshot, um, where students are with the grade level standards, uh, when they take the assessment itself. Uh, we are right now in the process of looking at our, at our year-end data. Uh, but at a quick glance, uh, every student has made progress, uh, in the areas of math and ELA. Um, the one hundred twenty-eight students that were a part of this program made growth, uh, in their ELA and their math. Uh, and on average, all of our students are either at grade level or exceeding grade level, um, on the average. So that particular piece, um, is nice because we have not had a program in place to progress monitor. And, um, that has helped us with conversations that that data has helped us to say, what do students need? What small groups do we need to put in place? Uh, and when can we provide students with that extra support to kind of close the gap to the best of our ability? The last piece, uh, for our systems targeting excellence, uh, was our adoption of the acceleration academies. Uh, and we worked with the district to come up with twelve different acceleration academies that we could offer at Gates, ranging from, uh, Spanish culture and heritage all the way to math, uh, and robotics. And we had over seventy students participate over the course of the year. Uh, we're very grateful that we could offer this. Uh, we're very grateful to the staff that ran these programs. And we know that these were effective, uh, just due to attendance, but also some of these workshops did do a pre and a post, um, assessment to, to see what are our kids doing. And I think, uh, Mr. Long, your question of, of how are we also not just supporting students that need to kind of accelerate their learning to meet the expectations, but how do we help those students who already are here and kind of go to the next piece? These were a really great vehicle for that. Um, and these allowed us to say, okay, you're here. We want to provide you something to push even further. And so seventy students took advantage of this, uh, and we're hopeful that we're able to offer some form of this, uh, in the future. In terms of the culture of collaboration, uh, our goal was by June twenty twenty-two, we will have strengthened our connections with students and families to improve their sense of belonging by increasing opportunities for collaboration and engagement. Uh, the first piece that we did was we, uh, created a student council. Uh, since we've been in the new building, we've had all different ways for students to participate and take on leadership roles. But we wanted to go back to a very old school student council. Um, so we had eighty students, two from each homeroom, uh, that met monthly, uh, to share what their classmates were talking about, to share their concerns, to share their ideas, um, and then to implement and then kind of come together to create some of those solutions for that. Um, so we've been very happy to have that back. That has provided kind of a voice and, and has allowed us to say, alright, we can call upon the student council to see what their opinions are. Uh, and that has helped us to kind of make some changes and to increase that, uh, collaboration between students and our school. Uh, we also have created targeted opportunities for family in the community, uh, to be involved in our school. Uh, we introduced our coffee with caregivers program, uh, and each month between ten and twenty parents and community members and caregivers have come to discuss certain topics. Uh, we always have a theme that we like to talk about and then just open discussion. So we've had conversations, most recently just about transition and, and what does it mean to, to transition to a new school? What does it mean to transition from grade to grade? Does it mean to transition from a, you know, twelve-year-old to a thirteen-year-old? Um, and these were kind of, we each month had a different speaker. Uh, the speaker was, and someone within our building or within our district. Uh, we had Jamil Adams come and, and do, uh, kind of an overview of the DEI work that we're doing and to hear parents and hear, um, caregivers share their thoughts and ideas, um, into that. Uh, we have had, uh, Amber Galvin from Situate Facts come to talk about, uh, just different opportunities that kids have and the different things that we as adults in their lives can do to keep them healthy and safe. Um, and that has been, you know, just a great way of getting people into the building to collect feedback and to share some of the work that we're doing, uh, with students. Our parent expert panels, which, um, we discussed at our state of the school piece was we have asked parents and caregivers and community members to tell us who they are because we need lots of people, uh, to do good work at Gates. So, um, we are asking people to share their passions, their occupations, and then we're calling upon people, um, to come into our classrooms and serve as experts or serve as, you know, people who can kick off and then make organic chemistry excite, um, it as a real life piece. Um, and so that, we will continue to use that, uh, and continue to bring in as many people from the outside into our schools as possible to open doors and expand possibilities. Um, we've worked with our PTO to, uh, create twenty thousand dollars worth of cultural enrichment opportunities for our students. Uh, and we're very grateful to the parents, uh, who have stepped up and, and done great things with our PTO because they provide wonderful opportunities for our kids within the community. because they provide wonderful opportunities for our kids within the classroom. We've expanded our extracurricular offerings, our interest-based clubs. And we've also had different parent caregiver workshops focusing on student anxiety, focusing on executive functioning, among other topics that we've offered at night to bring people in and to hear kind of what their concerns are and to offer our support and partnering to create good for kids. Finally, we implemented some school-wide challenges, some, not challenges, some tactics to engage students and families. And so we've kind of phrased them as challenges, and we challenged our staff at the beginning of the year to make sure that every single member of our school community got a welcome back call by the first day of school. I'm proud to say that 100% of our students and families got a welcome back call. In terms of February to, October to February, we said we wanted 100% of our students to receive some type of acknowledgement of their achievements or of their efforts or of their character through writing a postcard. And so we're proud to also say that 100% of our students received a postcard from a staff member acknowledging something that that student should be proud of. And finally, we challenged our parents and our families. We wanted 100% of our staff members to get a personalized message from a parent or a caregiver acknowledging their efforts after a long year. And 100% of our staff did get a personalized message. And so I think our idea of really finding ways to bring people together through collaboration, through students, staff, families, everyone, it's been a really, really great year at Gates. It's been a really great collaborative process, working not only with our school council and our school, but kind of connecting it to all of the great work that's happening across the district. And in your backup packet, anything on here that is a hyperlink, you can see the actual artifacts and data just explaining kind of where we are with the process. And this allows us to then say, for next year, you know, yes, we may have accomplished something, but what is the next step of that? And we're excited to start thinking about our idea. We're here now, how do we get to here next year? So that is our school improvement plan for 2021, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. So thank you for your participation. I have to say, I just love this idea of getting to know the community and then calling on them to contribute. I feel like that's, to me, that epitomizes improvement, right, modeling that. I'm wondering, Mr. Beatty, what can the school committee do in this upcoming year to support that expansion of that sort of work that you're doing? What do you need from us?
Thanks. I'm glad that you said that, and I think what we need is just your continued support as we work on developing curriculum. That's where it starts, what are our state standards? Where does that begin? And then how do we make this, how do we provide authentic opportunities for learning within our building? And so kind of that idea that we're collecting data, we care about safety, we care about achievement, we care about growth. All of that is absolutely essential. And I think just the idea of continuing to say, and how are we making this authentic and engaging and meaningful for kids is a great question to be asking everyone that talks about teaching and learning. Because when kids are engaged, when kids make meaning from their experiences, whether it's reading a book or hearing an expert speak, that's where the real learning is going to take place. Thanks.
Fine. It kind of applies to all the programs because I feel like when I hear improvement plan, if something was wrong, you're trying to improve on it, right? You know, like I always, it should be like continued improvement plan. Because everybody's doing such good work, and you continue to do such great work, so.
And we can always get better, and that's.
It's true, but like it's.
I would just comment that, I guess personally, we benefited from the improvement plan or things put into place directly. Our family has always wanted, I think that the culture at the school is just second to none. And I think that that includes students and families feeling as if they're a part of that school. So I want to thank you for that and for that to continue in the future as it appears that it will. So I just wanted to thank you for your efforts. It is definitely paying off and showing progress.
Thanks very much.
It's kind of a, sorry. Even coming out of the pandemic, where I can go like this situation with me and TV, and I can see some of the events happening at Gates, or instances where, you know, I couldn't make it for a certain reason before I went to Gates. I can go back and I can see some of the heartbreak that's going on in schools and just that, you know, a great window into a lot of things that you have going on. And I mean, your point about the 70 students in the C program, that's great, it gives them something beyond the pages to hear yelling around. It's to have, okay, I'm, it's something you're interested in, get that excitement for a specific topic. Just like, you know, breaking out the, you know, diving to further, see if this is what you want to go with your career. So kind of elementary principals, right, it's something, well, development, it's a great program to be able to, if it's exciting, be a part of their school. Very programs that they're excited about that someone else might also, you know, for the park fans or, you know, whatever it may be. It's, it's a great opportunity. And I think, and it's going to, if you're a school with the learning needs, I mean, last week, you had like 73 kids from the junior alma society. I think that's a great number to be able to partner with. I don't know if it's over, it's great right now, 205. I mean, that's still an amazing percentage of the number of kids that are probably qualified, but were chosen by the staff to, you know, be a part of that program. And it's really just a great testament to what's going on at Gates, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with every comment that members have made. I think to the student council, the 80 students, that's amazing. That's fantastic.
They're great kids.
Yeah, it's great. It's great. And I'm a big fan of IXL. I can see how it helps. It's just a good program. It seems to just hit all the marks. Okay, so anybody else have any other final thoughts here? I will. Okay, all the paper.
Alright. Thanks very much.
Thank you. From choir. Hello again. So we also at the high school made our school improvement plan with our school council. So I'd like to thank parents Jack Gates, Meredith Nelson, Amy Charsal, Patty Thompson, students Victor Bauger, Delina Gabor Hewitt, Molly Ryan, and our educators Kathy Hall, Val Carrato, Zoe Ryan, and Patrick Newman for their work this year. This is our plan that spans two years as well, and I think that a lot of the work in here won't be new to you. And I think that this is a two-year plan, so we're really excited to. And the district pillars. So goal number one is to increase educational, under excellence, to increase access to a participation in advanced coursework, in advanced placement opportunities. This is our work with Mass Insight brand, with the AP BHS STEM expansion that we did. And as I said in the state of the high school a couple of weeks ago, we have come to the table to look at our practices, to look at our handbook, to look at our policies, and to get kids excited about and interested in AP. That's been year one. So as we move forward, it's to start digging into the data. Who's taking AP? How do our scores look? How do we increase the access to all of our students across demographics? And to give them the support and structures to take the AP courses and the courses that are right for them and that they want to take. So this includes items like participating in summer bridge programs for students, our mock exams, having the group, the steering committee work with our teachers, having our teachers work with educators across AP nationally in professional development and also monthly meetings. And to spread just awareness about what AP needs through colleges and universities, for students in high school, for the balance, the whole picture around this area being appropriately challenged. So again, we're really interested in the data from year one, who's registered for next year, what our scores look like, and then being able to follow those trends through the next couple of years with Mass Insight. The second goal is to prepare students for 21st century careers through high interest concentrations of coursework, extracurricular work-based and service opportunities. So these are pathway designations that we're looking to develop in global studies. Business, Health and Human Services, or Biome, and Environmental Stewardship, which is our engineering hall here. And over the next two years, this year, we're looking to pilot local studies in business and continue to develop our STEM areas so that over the next two years, we are offering these pathways to students. That includes developing, how do students learn about these tracks? Starting in freshman year, exposing them to different areas, being able to have those inroads into the core areas if they so choose. And if they don't, knowing that that's okay as well. But if these are areas that we know our kids are interested in, and they're also high target areas for the mass workforce, we want to prepare our students to be competitive and prepared in these areas should they choose to do that for college and career. That this work has included our department chairs, teachers, working in our compass group. That's a team of teachers that works together to fulfill goals of the high school forward. We've connected with other high schools who are doing pathways and really looking at our paperwork, who tracks our students, how do we mentor them through this program? And then what comes of that? And that really is about that designation upon graduation. So this is in progress, again, starting through the freshman advisory. We want to have that whole plan articulated so that we can add that to the program of studies to roll out to and then to pilot to the following year. Our third goal is under collaboration and personalization to support and motivate students to achieve their highest potential through individual, flexible, and structured educational and support experiences. So these are the areas where we're really looking to target that individualized, personalized experience for every student, whether they're going to a four-year college, two-year college, military, straight to career. We want them to have a plan. We want them to be supported to do that. That's from our highest accelerated learner through our struggling learners who are, you know, it's a true feat to make it to graduation. One area that we're looking forward to starting in the fall is working with our counseling staff to develop a curriculum scope and sequence. This is an area that we've identified that we want to have more clarity and transparency out to our families and our students to know what our counseling staff does and when, be able to share that so we have those supportive resources and that they build through the four years of high school. This year, we underwent a change in our age block advisory time where we're using the software to individualize that experience for students and teachers. I give students and teachers the opportunity to to schedule in with the teacher or to schedule a student that you need to see. So for three of our days of the week, teachers are able to do that, students are able to do that more efficiently, get the time that they need together with groups of learners or one-on-one with individual students for extra help and support, or with a whole class if they're looking to extend or engage with the group. Our academic mentoring programs split up so that the needs are met both at the ninth and 10th grade level, which is really about self-advocacy and self-efficacy in the learning process. And then 11th and 12th really expanding for what are your goals and how can high schools support you to achieve your next goals? So leveraging relationship building, targeted interventions, and personalized goal setting. We also had C Academy offerings here at the high school that helped our students expand their skills in areas like CAD and science fair. We have not participated recently in the regional science fair. Our students started that process, and they're excited to continue to do that and to compete next year at the regional science fair. And then really coordinating and promoting our supportive structures. The NHS tutors, we just had 89 students inducted into the National Honor Society this spring. We have an after-school intervention called LIFT, Learning is Fun Together for freshmen. And then again, our age block. So being able to have a plan for every student and being able to support every student to achieve their goals. This is also where PAIR falls within the program and our goals. We've been working with PAIR over the past several years, and our teachers are really interested in moving to how do we own that data and be able to use it in our form decisions in the classroom? So we've been using it at that higher level, that PD to faculty, the data back strengths and weaknesses of what we can do on the whole school model. And would like to, along with our middle school and elementary politics, start to really implement that at a more deeper and individual level next year as well. And then finally, goal four is also collaboration and personalization that all stakeholders will work to create a safe, welcoming environment, relationship building, where all students, staff, serve, achieve, invest, and learn. Those are the high schools' core values. So our objectives are to coordinate and leverage our groups and activities so that we build one cohesive school culture and to increase the two-way communication between administration and students, staff, parents, and community members. So this includes opportunities between our Boston resident and Situate resident students and families. Our school council felt very specifically that we wanted to call this out because we did historically have stronger connections between our families, Boston residents, Situate resident families, and through more formal processes. And when that became that more organic, it felt like some of the relationships fell apart because people didn't know how to and where to and when to forge those connections. So we want to be really intentional about offering those opportunities to bring parents together, to bring students together, whether it's eighth grade orientation, eighth to ninth grade, or expectations night that we build in, and the way that we want to do this next year is to build in opportunities within the social events and the school events that we already have scheduled so that it's not an add-on, but that it's an added feature to the events that we're already offering. In addition, we work very hard at outreach to our staff. So administration to staff, administration to students, like the Student Advisory Council. I met with a couple of groups today. We're talking about starting a club council with representatives of each of our 38 clubs for next year, just like Athletic Director Payne has the captain's council that he's working toward. And really just continuing that culture building and that relationship building coming out of who written students who are here. And then, you know, also doing that with our caregivers, having those opportunities for in-person conversations, getting information out to families and being strategic and deliberate about that. We all know we can be inundated with information across schools and across the district. So we want to be very intentional about the work that we do here and transparent with the work that we do. And just as Principal Beatty just mentioned, that outreach to families, that's something that we also did here at the high school. And we want to be respectful of parents not necessarily getting seven or 14 calls on the first day of school because the high school structures are a little bit different, but that every student and teacher is able to make that connection in the starting weeks of school and that they understand how to get in touch, what the expectations are, where to go for support, and that everybody has a shared ownership of that, that welcome to school and that sharing of information and how to find me here at the high school. That includes our club fairs, that includes our counseling staff, that includes our transitions. Into ninth grade, we work closely with the counseling staff, counselors to counselors, the special ed team, eighth grade to ninth grade, and then the administrators to make sure we have smooth transition progress. Doctor Glatter, questions or comments?
Like I said, I have, I had to put this on you, Doctor Glatter. I'm not sure where this falls, perhaps in the district, I guess district plan, strategic plan going forward. But no, there's been just, there's always discussion every year. We talk about. I guess district plan, strategic plan going forward, but no, there's been just, there's always discussion every year. We talk about where MCAS falls relative to our district. And I could have asked the principal, all the other principals the same question. Um, and I don't know the right answer, I just want to throw it out there. We don't, other school improvement plans, maybe that's not where it goes, has any reference to MCAS. No, that obviously, the goal of all of our, uh, schools is to make sure that our students meet grade level standards. Does that mean that they successfully or, or have successful scores or on MCAS or, or is it something that we don't necessarily utilize as part of our school improvement plan? I'm not sure you need to answer that. Um, and I'm not sure if it will come out later, but again, every year we talk about MCAS, the results, but we don't talk about how it fits into our strategic plan or our school improvement plan. So I'm just not sure how much focus there should be on it and if so, where does it fall into each, uh, level of our education? So you don't have the answer, I just thought of it now when you were, and you're the current sitting.
Sure, sure. I can say at the high school, we know that the buck stops here, right? So we're graduating students, all of our, our, our grades are supporting through to completion at 12th grade. Uh, we look at our MCAS scores every year. I think that the conversations we've had around educational excellence and kind of where's the data is our next step is really to start sharing that information, um, more regularly and clearly. That's to our staff, that's with our students and families. Being able to say, here's where we stack up, here's how we performed, here's where we're looking to grow and what we're looking to focus on. Some of our department chairs, the assistant superintendent, Driscoll, that's work that we plan to do as part of educational excellence and moving our whole building in district four. Whether it's in the plan or not.
No, I think that ultimately, I, probably the answer that I wanted to hear is that, is that everything we're doing is, is hopefully ensuring that we're working towards successful passing or whatever, whatever schools are on MCAS. Yes, that's.
I can give you a data point that you can look forward to that we haven't had since 2018. Um, it's the percentile rating of each school.
Yes.
So what happens is every school in the state is, yeah, it's a percent upgrade. It's from one zero to 100. So it's like, you take that from standard nine or all those tests you took when you were younger. You get your percentile rating. The state will provide that for all public schools, starting again with this next round of accountability data. So it's a lot to sift through, like sipping water from a fire hose. But one thing for sure, that is solid to look at for each school is the percentile rating.
Thank you.
I'm curious to hear, um, a lot more about the pathways program. If you could, and I'm part of my ignorance, but just sort of thinking about if I were a family with a student who want to do pathway versus non-pathway versus, versus like social growth, both techniques, can you just disarm for me a little bit those different options?
So, um, yeah, so when we started talking about the pathways, we were looking at, um, there are innovation pathways grants in the state, there are high, high interest areas. And so we wanted to look at the high interest and high growth rate jobs in Massachusetts specifically and help prepare our students for those careers and for, um, postgraduate study in those areas if that's what they choose. We also wanted to do what we do best at Situate. And we wanted to be true to our school and our programs. And so for example, we don't just have engineering or, um, manufacturing, which is one that the state is really interested in. We have environmental stewardship through the lens of engineering because that's what's special about Situate. And they're still going to get the exposure, the practice, um, and the application in, in engineering to be able to go and pursue that. Um, and whether that's our kids participating in robotics to design something that, um, meets a need or a device or, uh, our biology kids and our engineering kids working together to identify um, an, an issue in the community with, uh, regarding to ecology. And then they're designing and developing something that then they go out and they use together. So in these four areas, we determined that there was interest in Situate, uh, interest with our students and our staff. There's in, there's high growth area in these four areas. Um, and that we would be able to offer our students some sort of recognition for concentrating and focusing and going above and beyond in that area. So does every student have to do this? Absolutely not. I still believe in the, you know, the liberal arts, um, the generalist, all of those things. And that's okay for kids. But if you come in and you say, I want to go into business, I want to go into medicine. For example, our kids will go into this and learn that medicine isn't just be, being coming in MD. There are so many careers and so many pathways. And so if we can link them up with the club, for example, the Future Healthcare Workers of America that just went and had three straight days of meeting professionals across a number of different careers. Then that's, it's that exposure. It's saying, if you're going to do community services in Situate High School at graduation, let's do it in this area that you're really excited about and partner that. So it's giving them internship opportunities, casted projects. And really just a scope and sequence of coursework and, and other volunteer work experience outside of the classroom to say at the end, yes, you've earned this credential, you've gone above and beyond in this area. And we can say with confidence across those four areas that you are a standout scholar in global studies, in business or in the two STEM areas.
Okay. I, I know the third goal that you put in, we talked about the, the, the structure, the individual qualification. Maybe we've seen it over the years, but I think it's great that we're like, thank God for the money you had, the service and the student exchange trips that we have. It's, that exposure for our students, I think is, is great. And one of my favorite things over here is watching the students walk into graduation and walking the cabs because it's not just, it's a, a logo going, but some of the creativity that's in there. It's just, it's great to watch and you can see. Get a little bit of a glimpse of what they, what they've done in their education, that would be, you know, you can see that. Um, congratulations to you, Mr. Dudgeon, but also, you know, all of the students are great. Gotcha. Um, you know, it was a great, um, congratulatory, um, congratulations to all of them. Uh, I, I think I say this every time I see you, but, um, as, as you were talking about the different programs working in the schools and then hearing as much of that amount of work that I know of, you, um, is from those, it's a little really help because that's continued by colleges I have, really particular to this class or the end of their career. It's like advice that is a little bit more. Or if I had this a little bit more earlier in my life, you're, you're pumping. Um, and I know it's a lot of work out even that, you know, hearing feedback on how that impacts either the improvement plan or the curriculum or what we offer maybe here, um, at some point. And I'm probably going to ask this poorly, so I apologize. But when you talk about the AP, um, working your first goal, because of any, any talk about, okay, we have AP classes that we have in state, but either kids that don't feel that they're ready or, um, I got the point of them taking AP class, we look to take either some of the rigor, some of the process, either in AP classes and bring it down to, to the upper, you can see few level classes. And, you know, you can see ways that we can maybe help those kids get a little bit more prepared to take an AP class in the next year or, when they come.
Absolutely. So some of the things that we have done is looked at our course titles and our course offerings to align with what Desi calls advanced coursework. And we want all of our students to have a minimum of one advanced course before graduation. So that's part of that. Some of our often level math courses count into that. Um, we're adding that idea of that pre-AP with some of the, um, younger courses and the bridge programs. And exploring what are ways that we can give access to all students to this idea of this college, this is college level work. Um, in, in an ideal world, every student would have the opportunity to take more than one classes. And so that's what we're looking toward. What is your passion? What is your interest? What is your skill set? And then how can we develop that in you? It doesn't have to be seven, eight courses. But if there's something that you're interested in and passionate about that you can dive deeper into, we want to help you be able to do that.
Um, thank you. So yeah, I, I just want to highlight again, that whole tight partnership, I think that's just been fantastic. And when the representative's here, it's just obvious her esteem for Situate, she just felt like it was a good partnership on that end too. So I think that's noteworthy too, because it has to be, you know, a good fit. Uh, and it seems like it was. And I love that you're, for the counselors, it's probably something that they want to, because it gives structure. So that's a good direction for that.
Thank you. It's time for them to share their story too.
Yeah.
So, you know, all the great things that they're doing in the programs, right, it developed and that they share out to families and students.
All right. If there's no other comments or questions on entertainment vision or these sort of things.
I'll make a little trip to, you know, I did your high school improvement.
I also see a favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, next on our agenda is our liaison on science and technology. So I did get some feedback from community members on, um, uh, well, some people were excited to take on some roles, maybe. And others were kind of open-minded to end roles. So.
I'll be saying, I'm better to say yes or no.
Yes, there you go. Everybody should have a plan.
So, um, we've got advisory, so Peter was our advisory liaison, um, I'll update this document as we go.
Okay, that's you. Uh, okay, so advisory was Peter for 2021, 2022. Does anybody feel passionately about who the liaison to the advisory?
No, but, um, yes, sure. I think that often without bothering this guy, I know that people want to, or people want, but, um, I think it's helpful to understand the level of commitment.
Yes.
The beach committee, I will say that that level of commitment is minimal. Um.
The summer head, hi, that's the two way, the summer head.
That one is minimal, um, I tend to.
You might want to take like five flights in one, you know, flight.
Yeah, I, so this is the advise, this is the liaison to the town advisory committee.
Right.
In reality, I just went, uh, when, uh, Superintendent and Dr. Dutch, um, reviewed the school budget. I went as a, as supportive of them. Other than that, I didn't necessarily choose to attend, although I could get all the invitations. Um, so that, that was, that was pretty easy left.
It's up to the attending. But now that everything's kind of act flowing, I think there was the COVID jam up with, you know, virtual meetings and, I don't know, I just want to make the comments that, yeah, like let's do, let's try to attend and then report out. Prince Fire.
Really right.
Somebody else forgot.
It's minimal.
Yes, I will. Oh, pass. I, I.
Chair.
Yes.
No. The catch. I figured, I was not going to tell you.
Sure.
Supper jam. Okay. Here we go. Here's our list. Um, select, you know, that word. So select word traditionally chair and vice chair. So I'm kind of keeping with that tradition of you and I. Yeah, we're all different. Just touch base. Um, financial forecast. So Peter was on this past year, Peter expressed an interest to remain. I was hoping to come on, maybe there's a review discussion we have.
Yeah, I just mentioned.
Or whatever, I said, but.
I, no, no, I, I, as I mentioned all the time, whenever this committee comes up, my opinion is the most important committee of anything in town. It dictates the budgets to the town and to the schools. Um, it takes a long ti- this is, this is a heavy lift. This, they need, uh, I don't know, it's probably like six, six-ish, five to six times throughout the year as we run the budgets. Um, they're not long meetings, but they're fairly frequent as the budgets are being dictated. It takes a long time to get comfortable. I think I've done this committee for three years and I get a little bit more comfortable every year. So I'd like to remain on just because of the knowledge that I've built. But I also think it's important, we do get one school committee gets one vote on that committee. I think it'd be helpful to have someone else if Mike wants to do it, um, to potentially join and just not be a voting member. I think, I mean, anyone can attend those meetings. They're not necessarily pub, they're not that publicly.
They're public.
Their public meetings are not really advertised. They're not attended. There's a couple of folks who do attend. Um, so.
It's very important, I'm sorry, it's very important.
So I, I would actually ask, I think it'd be great to have Mike or anyone else who wants to join and we'll just notify the committee that we're going to have to there, but please have one vote. If that's okay.
Then fine, if that's it, you guys.
Yeah, no, I would, I'd like five or six years on the extra that we've shared questions.
Sure. That would be great. All right, Janice, you were on public building in the past. Jenny, thoughts about?
I was with it if we, Harry's interested, it's, I, we're used to.
Um, I would. What was the left? Did you ever have a public building? I'll do that one.
Okay, okay. Maybe now.
Yes.
Right. Harry, landing board?
I'll, I'll really deal with that, I think.
Deal with it.
What can I do?
Yeah, everything do you care for sure?
Unless somebody really wants to take that position, I'll stay where I am.
Okay. That's, that's it. All right, um, capital planning.
So that one was interesting this year because most of the meetings are going on Monday nights or around street committees.
Um, we've been entering, yeah, that's a tough.
Um, I think the biggest meeting for that is one of the superintendent and Dr. Dutch present. Um, we do a quote, we currently have a quote on that committee. I think the charter review is, you know, we're not, we still have one.
Yeah.
Um, but similar to financial forecast, probably five or six meetings. It's interesting, don't you, but the meeting dates are hard to do very, um, I don't know, three days before the meeting, I'm just trying to schedule it.
I do feel like the NACs of books that are, are good because you're learning, like you learn about the town side and everything. I, I think it's interesting.
Do you want that one?
I, I did it for two years.
I mean, I'll say I don't know if anyone else wants it, but.
Well, do you want this one?
I don't. No, I'm just kidding. I, I, I don't, I'm actually.
Okay, okay.
All right.
I know we won't vote, so.
Right.
I know, usually they know who to vote against.
Okay. All right, recreation.
Very good.
I like being on recreation. It's a good committee. Yeah, it's interesting. I'm happy to stay on rec unless somebody wants to.
But yeah.
I don't want to.
No, I do. I like. It's a good, um, I think recreation, you know, it's important and it's, um, certainly ties to students and families. So I'm. Yeah.
So. Right, yeah.
Great. Master plan advisory.
They already made.
That's a, no, no.
Yeah, because I mean, things come up, I'll be happy to.
All right. So should I split you for the sake of, in case you'll keep us posted? I'm on charter review because, okay, because I am. Um, and that, that will be also kind of hopefully wrapping up. Uh, SEF, Janice? I kind of have a lot of, to, to talk a lot of, but anybody want to take SEF? Mike had expressed interest in finance committee and noted that it kind of goes with, goes well in financial forecasting. So you guys.
Yes. Yeah.
All right, technology. All right.
I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. Not just that, I don't, I guess I don't know. Okay, well, maybe we can find out.
Let us know.
Alright, the DEI, um this kind of went on and on. I I don't. I have you and I as a little example. It was off and then I was kind of just like.
Did it all go like that?
Is it off though? We don't have.
You just have to be to deal, to deal harder.
Yeah, it's really good.
Yeah, and that's what we decided.
These are. Yeah. Yeah, so I guess the question is. Do we want not any or is it all settled?
I think if we needed.
Yeah, I would like to be part of it.
This is the the always discussion I wonder is like, what's the difference with subcommittee advisory, division making an advisory, an advisory position?
Exactly. Okay, maybe that's what it is.
They get involved.
Like.
E two as opposed to having technically going to the meeting as part of the subcommittee. Right, because I think subcommittee, you have lawyers.
Different.
I think you're, I think you even SEF is more of a advisor because.
Yeah.
I don't really know. I don't know that I've been doing this five years. I don't know the difference between the three really. But I don't know if it's in the head of the subcommittee or advisor.
Right, it goes to the. You're doing that stuff.
I feel like sub, I feel like subcommittee, you you shouldn't be going to every meeting.
Right.
Um but SEF, I I don't feel that. I don't think you need to go to every meeting with the other one. And then the DEI committee, I don't think you need to go to every meeting.
Yeah.
Just under those bases. I'm not sure if it really.
Yeah. Okay. I did far.
It's in the same.
That was.
Yes.
Yeah. Now that they're done, we'll stay. Yeah. Alright, um policy.
Jacob. Said two to that pretty soon.
He loves policy.
Right, I want to say that as well. You started getting it up.
Yeah, like. They love policy. Um simply thank Peter and Mike wanted to be on the same thing. You know, I would be Buddhist.
You said pick a hand.
I do, you guys.
I think there's gonna be a huge tomorrow, so whether if you can't attend, then I'll probably just stay. What time? Why?
Why? What time, what time does it begin?
That's.
It's not definitely.
Okay, so.
Quick.
I'll I'll be there. You the Janice or you the other person? We'll make sure we have support. Or is it Zoom or in person?
It's gonna be Zoom and I'll message off.
Alright, okay, pardon me. Just just to make sure you know. We get it done.
Alright. Alright, this is building committee. I put myself, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
This Thursday and next Thursday.
Janice needs to stay on because she's on the subcommittee to select the OPA.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Alright, look, that's fine.
I didn't know I was on that.
You are.
The class of this one.
E two because we submitted the list to.
I'll do it. I'll do it again.
No, you submitted it again. Do you want to do it again?
I'll do it again. Yeah, yeah.
See, I'm.
Well, we can, you can. Well, that can be changed.
Yeah, that's true.
That list can be changed if people run off.
Right, awesome, yeah, yeah.
Alright, do you want?
Six year commitment, do we?
Um. The West Core. Interesting.
That is updates. I mean, it wasn't gonna allow meetings to.
So yes.
Alright, I just want to see. So.
Mary.
Just a question, um why do we not have CC on places to see at West Core?
Yeah.
Another waiting for you. I'm just curious what you can play your.
So um.
Just rename it. It's interesting.
You want the whiskey into it and they grew down too.
Just be system cities. I don't know.
There could be some cities.
Cities of life.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah. Sister cities.
Oh. Alright. Perfect.
Sure.
Yeah. Alright, um. Do you have some work over?
Yeah. I gotta stop in jail.
Alright, I think that will be. It's okay. So um Mike reached out about high school. I. Yeah. Yeah, okay, I think only because.
I was getting that straight. Was it a few? You're getting updates, but I'm sorry.
You could see that.
I can't see outside.
Um. I don't mind jumping off of this, I think if you want to do it. But I don't know what would future my family. It's.
It's only, it's a one time, one time while we're.
Ask her that.
I think we should probably stay on. I think we should stay on.
One time. Alright.
Probably.
Alright, um.
Just just for consistency.
Okay. School council. Mike had expressed some high school interest. I. I I would do push any gates, but if somebody feels strongly about either of those, I. West.
I know that's.
Especially high school, but.
Like I've been, I've done the.
Sorry, thank you for that, Mike.
Yeah.
Are you good?
Alright. Alright, um. Does anybody have a legion or?
I'll stay on.
Nope, I can't. I'm still there.
Why?
Alright, Carrie.
I'll stand off.
Uh you said you'll stand all the time. Mike? I know.
Swip. That's right, I'll do it off the top.
I'll do the middle. Alright, so you're thinking same.
Right, that's. Beautiful.
We want.
Somebody always comes up to.
I know. Alright, um. That's right. So that's it. I'll just check on that liaison sister cities and add that and then. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve our subcommittee liaison assignments for twenty twenty three.
Liaison subcommittee, council positions and.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Um next, we will just discuss our committee meeting dates for summer. Um we're looking at July twenty fifth, August fifteenth, August twenty ninth. In June, right, the last day of school, June twenty seventh, which two members are in on you. So it will just be us maybe. Yeah. Which is more, so we're okay. Um if that's okay. I don't even, I actually, I thought a little bit about what it looked like to move it and I I I don't even, I mean.
Two.
Then we have the four that live. Yeah, it seems a little complicated, but so.
Check it out. Where to be from?
Right, okay. Great meeting. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the summer meeting days.
Um. The summer meeting days.
Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
And uh before we move on, just relation to summer, I did talk to um Dorothy Pressler at Mass about doing a summer retreat. They call workshop routine, retreat. Um and she's kind of said that Jim Harvey can be our person for summer, so. Even if it's back and forth, but I'll be like trying to coordinate that, check what our goals, reflections, those sorts of things going forward. Um okay, so moving on, we are going to do our leadership report, superintendents. Okay.
Topic here is to talk about the business, right, his director position, specifically Dr. Dutch, recent process, put some light on. Appreciation for Dr. Dutch, but also um. How we came about hiring him and where we stand in the future. I think a lot of people agree that it's kind of outstanding job to do he. So if you don't know, Dr. Sis, retired superintendent, upper K tech, if you weren't able to see the awards, he's one of the things he did under that, under his leadership there. So recruiting him and getting here was a huge win for us, me personally. He was able to do that as a retiree in legislation, COVID, uh when the government made a state of emergency in the last few years, he was able to do so. Um under that exemption, which um. The law exempted limits for hours and money that retirees do make. That has since expired and so we had to post the position as a process. Um I had done a lot of research on it. Obviously, it's a huge position for us. Uh it's just a shortage of qualified or any certified business managers and directors out there. Three other schools were posting at a similar time for us. Um one had seven candidates, three were certified, one had to repost because they had no qualified candidates. Um so we did that and we had one applicant, uh and that applicant was not not certified as a business manager. Virtually had no applicants. Uh so fortunately, there's a process called the critical shortage waiver that you can go through. Which you talk to the state about, we've looked, we can't find anybody. We have somebody. And I will be honest, Dr. Dutch has been, was being recruited at the time by the districts. Um work for them. Um so we put that through the state. Uh two weeks passed and we finally got a response that um we were approved for that. So Dr. Dutch has a one year extension, so he'll be with us next year. Wanted to make that clear that that was the process. That's kind of how we've gone year to year with Dr. Dutch. Just to highlight some of the things, I think that in two, less than two years on the job, um he's been able to, his leadership has been able to bring us. Navigating the very. Up we heads of it. Labor intensive MSBA process that we're moving through a way from now, so just transfer that. Transparency we brought to the budget. I don't think anyone argued that it was a top priority when I got the job that the budget needed to be more transparent. Don't think you'd find a more transparent process than we have here in central. Thanks a lot for that. Uh revitalizing capital projects, many that were outstanding, outstanding. Prior administrations approved, we haven't acted on. I think you're gonna see a lot of action this summer because of COVID and lack of supplies, a bit working out, catching up to that. Patiently working through that. Uh Dr. Dutch has done a great job, so we're gonna start seeing some action. For example, uh high school locker room project is gonna actually start. Weeks. Um some of the other projects that, the other schools, the Jenkins, that have won the duck are gonna be starting, so we'll be excited to share out on that. Again, that's a lot of work. Uh it's been done. Huge win for our our community is the elimination of fees. And one of the top things that I heard when applying for this job, get rid of the fees. Um we've got earned kindergarten fee. Which is made kindergarten equitable for our community and this year, any student, I mean, their family that participates in athletics will benefit from not paying a fee this year. Again, two things, Dr. Dutch, huge influence and. Lastly, I mentioned this tonight, starting our our maintenance program. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars next year we'll have to actively um keep our buildings up to speed and be the best. So yeah, I can go on on, except I'm extremely proud of the work that he's led, so. Two things I wanted to do tonight is let the community know that we have a great one amidst that unfortunate happen, that process that we have that he won't be here. Uh much longer than the year and we're actively recruiting, so if anybody knows somebody that's certified business manager, you know, will be looking, can't keep up, friend forever under this critical waivers, one year to one year. Want to answer any questions?
Well, thank you, Dr. Dutch, sir. Like wanting to stick around.
We're gonna ignore the last part of one year.
Yeah.
Ten, that's.
But he said that year once, we still.
Yeah, yeah.
Except.
Yeah.
That's it.
Um it's unfortunate that there's a shortage, but. Somehow to our benefit anyway. Take it for now. Alright, uh next, Assistant Superintendent Frisco, who has been out.
Thank you for having me. Um and I want to thank you for extending me such grace um last school committee meeting when I couldn't do a few labor. The kindness that everybody has shown me is absolutely wonderful, so I would say everybody. Um what I have for you today is a presentation on what we look at in a district when it comes to the enrollment process um for uh the following call. I can share this screen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Stand please. I know.
Yeah, so.
I know.
So if you have, if you have questions as I'm going through, you're welcome um to ask. Um so I'm just going to give you a quick guide of all the things that we look at. It is urgent that we are flexible and attentive to our enrollment during this spring season, uh because we have to give all kids what they need, period. Um so the first thing that we do is we look at our in our current enrollment by school and by class. And we project that those students will be coming back this year. That's the assumption. A big part of enrollment is making sure that kindergarteners or pet families of kindergarteners register, so we can have accurate kindergarten records. That starts in about January, but there's a lot of. With um the kindergarteners and those registrations typically come trickily in. Um there's also um. The the caregiver registration process is something that doesn't shut down. There's never like a deadline for that and that's for all of us actually. The next group of students that we look at are students who are new to situat. So throughout the school year, we have students who are new residents to situat. However, um we also have at this time of year, our Boston resident students that if we have available seats. Through our Metco program, we add students to certain grades um based on the application process, process of Metco. Um there we have seats. And the thought process. So what do we do to decide and support principals as we break up the different classes, as we decide additional support? The first thing, and I think you saw that today, it was so nice to see all four elementary principals sitting together using words like capitation. Um we want to ensure consistency in elementary schools across the district. And sometimes we may reallocate resources as necessary to support student success. So that means it's our job as district leaders to look district wide at the resources that we have and prioritize um based on school. Um and how we find that out is not only simply through enrollment numbers, it's through communication with principals. It's through our beginning, middle and end of year data, um and it's ongoing communication through our district leadership team meetings. Um the second thing that we look at is we prioritize K to three class sizes. And I think some of you have heard us use this phrase before. In K to three, you learn to read. That is the foundation of everything that for literacy. And you heard we use Haggerty in foundations of our adopted integrity program. That is support to success in all other areas. So K to three, you learn to read, creates four and up that you need to learn. So it's very important that if you are a student and you are not meeting grade level expectations, we are utilizing those specialists that we're so lucky to have in situat, our reading specialists, our literacy specialists, our math specialists. Um and that was one of the things I was most amazed with when I came to situat, that you have so much support for all students. It isn't just if you're on an IP, you get that support. You are saved here by how you've allocated our specialists across the district and every student deserves that chance to make those jumps, so thank you. Um and the third thing is um we need to prioritize tiered interventions and supports with specialized teachers. So it is very important not just to say let's have more tier one instruction. If we have students who need. If we have students who need to bridge that gap, we need to make sure our principals are using their lip blogs, are using other additional tier two, three supports for those specific students. And the key takeaways. Something that we need to talk about is the concern is class size, and is that our goal? Obviously, we've received a lot of comments about is the philosophy changing or what does this look like? It is important that if our goal is to have small class sizes, which it is right now. We make sure that we are adding that as a part of our strategic plan and that we are planning structures throughout the district that will affect our decisions and initiatives. Um, the second thing is we need to make sure that we focus on students. So parents are encouraged to share their child's specific struggles and strengths with both teachers and principals, so we can ensure that supports are targeted for their child's specific needs. And I heard someone, I think it might have been Peter, say, you know, there's a lot of talk about supporting the students who are most needy. I would argue that if a student is, needs that push to be above grade level and they're born at school, that is a student who is at risk. We need every single student to be engaged, and that's what our specialist's for, and that's where we need to have those conversations with teachers and principals, so that we can make those decisions for each student. Um, there was also a question about special education services, depending on class sizes, does that change special education services? Absolutely not. Special education services and accommodations are dictated by a child's IUD, they're non-negotiable. Um, if you receive a special educational service, that is what you get. Um, so it is really important as district leadership that we have flexibility with supports. And our key is to monitor enrollment and have conversations with those principals as we move forward into the summer. And Bill has a couple, uh, he'd like to add and answer a couple of questions that I'm. Your questions.
I just put three statements together because I think. Brock's conversation would have to add with it. Size of twenty-four, twenty-five. Students that were made at, also followed up by questions on kindergarten numbers at Cushing, also followed up on numbers by LC, ALC. And so helping single approach, wanted to answer some of those common questions that were offered, and also possibly, how do you get these questions answered? What's the best way to do it? So I'd like to make it crystal clear, first of all, my personal philosophy, district philosophy, as Mr. Rascal had said, the small class size that are consistent across elementary schools. Um, with a special focus on our K to three learners. What do I mean by that? I mean by that, when we came here, there were certain schools that had fifteen and sixteen and seventeen students, or another school, schools also had twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. The average looked good, eighteen, nineteen, but some schools really had an advantage with really low class size. How does that happen? Happens when you get one class that exceeds the average, and goes twenty-four, twenty-five, and your top teacher then to get that down to fifteen, sixteen. You shouldn't have a coordinated plan for the next few years, when those kids graduate, where's that extra teacher? So that created that problem, so we've done, I think, very good job hiring that out, and our numbers are prospering with in all the schools. Pretty darn good, they're low. Um, again, one outlier, twenty-four, twenty-five, I think otherwise, the numbers are, yeah, extremely low, short. And our focus, again, kindergartens every year when they come in, we look at those numbers and they're very fluid. Question came up, why was this brought to budget season? It's not a budget question, it's a staffing question. We allocate staffing during the budget season to accommodate our needs, have the staff, question a way to allocate them, that's what we've been working on. So it's not a budgetary issue right now, it's an allocation of staffing. As Mr. Rascal has explained, we have a very thorough enrollment process where we look closely with our principals to ensure. That we are able to meet the needs of every student, every classroom. So like we ask our parents to do is to speak to the principals and teachers first, about their individual child. For example, in this case, next year, my child's going to be in a class of twenty-four, what's that look like? How is, is her needs going to be met? Whether they have an IUD, or they're an accelerated learner, or something, we're gonna clean. We can answer those questions. That's the first step to do. So we don't necessarily use a class-sized number, people are like, what's the magic number? There is no magic number. When you start getting into magic numbers, once we hit that number, you have to hire staff, you may not need it. This is an example of that. Again, that's, that's irresponsible. Um, so just basing it solely on a number, I don't believe it's prudent. So what we do is, we don't necessarily use a class-sized number, that's certainly important, it's something we look at, not the only in here. Uh, we look at the total number of adults able to support learning in our classrooms and their ability to meet each student's needs. So, again. Cituette is, is probably, is, well, in my twenty-seven years, has the most supports that I've ever seen, especially at the elementary. Uh, one of the few districts I've seen with adjustment council in every building, school psychologists in every building. That's great. Coordinators at the elementary level, not common. Um, and being EOL and math specialists, special educators, parent professionals, all of those people, it's not just a classroom teacher, it's a coordinated, uh, support system. That the principals work with the teachers to ensure that every student's needs are met, and that process did take place. In fact. I wanted to know that if I was gonna stick my neck out here and say, we're gonna have two, we possibly, unless the numbers change, we have two teachers in this case at our new school, twenty-four, twenty-five. I mean, with Mr. Rascal, this, um, ward, principal ward, and Dr. Boberg, we went over every single kid in that class. I wanted to know how their needs are gonna be met. How each kid was gonna be supported, that I can come out and confidently say, every kid's needs will be met, I have full confidence that, trust me. Right? Sometimes you just gotta trust people, having your experience, we're gonna meet those kids' needs. But I took that step, we met last Friday, we went over every kid, so we make sure that, yeah. Right? And we'll do that with every, every large group of parents, parents wants to do that, I have no problem with it, it's a superintendent, to that, if it's a superintendent, director, specialized principal, to reinforce that we can meet the needs of those kids. Now, principals and teachers and support staff do that in every class, that's part of our process of, uh, personal setting. Well, for example, we have highly qualified classroom teachers, math, EOL specialists, special education teachers, school psychologists, adjustment counselors, in-person professionals that are strategically utilized to meet the needs of students in every classroom. That's strategically done by chance, based on the needs of all those kids. You know that principals are bound, asking parents with feedback on each other, all that information's taken into consideration how we pick the kids up, make sure we can do that as well. We look at our enrollment numbers weekly and they change. They're fluid, especially in the younger grades, over the course of time, we identify increases or decreases in enrollment that call for staff adjustments, we will not hesitate to do that. This is a parent's ask, if in this case, the, uh, the athlete situation, five or more kids move in, or we sit down and say, okay, does that put us over a threshold? Likely that would, let me do that. We wouldn't do that last year, we would do that eight before school. Um, you know, we have to make a decision in August sometimes, sometimes with the final numbers, but we also have to have some idea of any purposes for that. I'd like to thank our parents and caregivers for your passion, determination. Do what's best for your child, we all have that common factor, we love our kids, we want it best. Personal philosophy is, if that was my child, how would I want it? I'm confident to say that our class groupings right now, I'd have my kid in any of those classes. You saw the number three on that ranking very closely, the top one was, we have the best teachers around. I think our two teachers in math, English specialists, parent professionals, special ed teachers that push into that class and help out, school psychologist, adjustment counselor, can handle that. I just, I suggest moving forward, these conversations happen at first building level with the principal and necessary staff about your individual child and how you, we are, we will be meeting their needs. I mentioned that, I just wanna reiterate enough, it's not to go to the school, we need to talk their job. Principals' jobs, teachers' jobs. Not satisfied with the teaching, the principal's response, you come to the central office. Then if you don't like, if you don't like the answer, you don't like the response, it means my possible, that's just a chain of command, you get the best results. Versus the opposite, you know, fifty emails to the superintendent, school, we want more teachers there. That's the best way, in my recommendation, to address those problems. School committee has hired me to make these day-to-day decisions, not for the school district. I agree strongly, we have formed a cohesive, experienced team to do so. I made about, probably too much, I was heading the door tomorrow. But we've got Mr. Rascal here who's highly capable, the principals are highly capable, make these decisions all the time, it's not unique to our district. And I'm confident that we're making the right decisions. And over time, we'll earn that trust if we don't have it now. What I ask for is that we take the time to sit down and have these important conversations and develop that trust over time, also look to our strategic planning process, as Mr. Rascal mentioned. We solidify some of these goals and priorities. We have a little sampling on the product change, but next year will be more focused groups, more depth conversations, very strategic planned, unstrategic planned, everyone will have the opportunity. And we'll really see what's, is one of those top priorities is class size, okay? How specifically do you want to do that? I think that'll help to see all this conversation with input from everyone. I'm optimistic about that, and I look forward to, you know, next steps in your involvement in that conversation as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkehead. Assistant Superintendent Rascal. Any other questions or comments?
So I, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, I have sort of a reflection and a question, and this is only from someone who's very new to the school. So as I think about our conversations around the budget, and I understand, um, Mr. Burkehead, that you said this wasn't a budget issue. I guess I wonder if it would be possible to sort of do some progress monitoring, if you will, on having incremental discussions around enrollment. What I was worried about as a school committee, a new school committee member, is when this information started to come out, it felt late to me as a new school committee member. And so I'm just wondering, in the interest of transparency and communication, is there something we could have done as a group to talk about this a little bit earlier? I don't know, your thoughts about that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So essentially, that's something we do all year long as a part of school operations, um, and we typically don't do that, um, in public meetings, on a regular basis. But if we had, let's say, townhouses were built and we had five families coming in, and they all have kids, and that happened in the middle of the year? We would have to have a conversation about what that feels like in classrooms, and support thing, even if it was fair. We do that all year long, and I think that's something I'd like to, I'd like to thank, um, Nicole Wong, excuse me, Nicole Brandini and Mike Wong, because. As a part of understanding the details and the process that goes into this, um, I want to say, two weeks ago, um. Two weeks ago, uh, they reached out and, God love you, they were in my office asking questions for over ninety minutes and got into the weeds and. And really talked about the process, and, um, I think that that's something that if we have questions about, it's important for us. I know you're on about a thousand different subcommittees, not about other stuff, but it's important to take the time to have those conversations, so that we can share together, um, what we do. Um, as a process and what we do as a district, so that we can build that trust that Bill was talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I think it's just to push back a little bit, I think it's a yes and, right? I think yes, it would be wonderful to spend ninety minutes digging into these, and I happen to be that at day, because I was signing the plan, which was a great privilege. Um, I just don't think all parents, I know my partner wouldn't have time to come to your office for ninety minutes, given schedules, and so I think. Me and the committee should also be thinking about how to strengthen transparency and think about maybe, again, for you as an expert in this area, this is what you do all the time. For me as a parent, this is all new. And so I just think, how do we just gradually open that door just a little bit to give us as a community and say, I'm not asking to show, you know, the whole epic cards, right? But just maybe a little bit, and again, this is just my sort of wish list and wondering, so it's just.
Yeah, well, I, again, I would encourage parents to reach out to the building principals, as classroom teacher, talk about what the class looks like, because.
Yeah, the building.
It's not all about adding a teacher necessarily, like a classroom teacher to me, for my, I mean, actually, I don't know if you can see it, but I have my kids up here right now, I have three little kids. Yeah, I'm passionate about children, that's why I'm here, because I want to do what's right for kids, and I believe that's why we're all here. Um, if we have kids who have specific needs, especially reading or in mathematics deficiencies, we have to make educational decisions. And not just put a band-aid on it and say, add a classroom teacher, more tier one. We really have to be thoughtful and take the time to work with those building principals to say, here's the specific needs of my kids in my building. And what might that look like? Does that look like another reading specialist? Does that look, we don't know, because every kid is an individual, every school has an individual need, and we need to take the time to hear that and work with that. And it was, I, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's kind of late and I'm a little emotional, but it was so sad, some of those emails, they used words like fight. And I was like, I don't want to fight, I want to talk, please, oh my gosh. So it does, it makes me so sad that that maybe was the link previously, that people have to fight to get what they need for their kids, and. And I, we just don't, we just have to have conversations, like you said, and, and we need to hear what your child needs and, and work together, so that it's an ongoing conversation. To build a school district that serves every kid.
Yeah, I think that's another worry, and I want to, and it's the, right, it's the, so.
Oh, absolutely. And I'll tell you what, I'll take a passionate parent or one that's uninvolved all day long, um, so it's free to, to, I, I love that, but it was also. I, you know, people we've never spoken to, and I'm reading the word fight, and it's like that, I, we don't want to start with that, we want to start with conversations, and our common goal, we're doing what's right for all kids.
Because I have one, sorry, one more than I'll get, I just, I have to help, but I take a human space, I have to, I have to. Mr. Burkehead, I just wondered if you could talk, I know, um, especially off route to process, we're thinking about consistency across elementary schools and kindergarten and whatever. Can you talk, just a little bit, just for my own education, when you think about low, low class size, right? Um, I know that research is mixed on this, and you, you said, and if you, I've heard you say a couple of times, when you reach the threshold. I guess I'm wondering, when do you as leaders know that you're at the adequate class size? And what, what's telling you, what evidence do you use to finalize that decision?
It depends on the children, so if we have a class where everybody's exceeding grade level, right, in reading and math, that looks different than a class that maybe needs more tiered supports. It looks different with kindergarten students than it does with fifth grade students. It really depends on that particular, I guess, group and needs, but I will tell you this, right now, we have the, we have neighborhood schools, tell me if I'm over time. Um, we have neighborhood schools, so that means, even though, let's say, we have eleven sections of third grade. That is not divided evenly across the district. We have eleven sections, but two are over here, three are over here, three are over here, so what ends up happening is. One school may have classes of fifteen, while another has twenty-two, and I'm, uh, Superintendent Burkehead emphasized this. That gives the illusion that there is an average that is okay, when in reality, we, we have to look at making sure that all schools. So what does that look like for the future in strategic planning? If the priority is small class sizes, are we looking at doing something different with our grade levels? If we're all together, we could divide the, that would significantly drop everybody's class size. But that's not something we can decide at nine, twenty, at nine by a school committee meeting, that's something much longer to think about and decide if we want to make sure, or if this is truly one of our top priorities long-term. What are the structures that we can put in place to make this something that is systemic for Cituette, long-term?
Well, well, I also think though, that if it's, I know, I told, if it's, if it comes down to the student, then that's in direct conflict with consistency across elementary schools. So that, that's the rough for me, is how do we achieve both personalized differentiated support for each individual student and arrive at, like, what, what do we mean when we say consistency? And that's what, that's what I sort of, that's what I'm struggling with.
Well, that's what everybody will struggle with, so that's why we have to think about, is it, are we grouping grades? What are the strategies that we're going to use for our system? Is it neighborhood schools, is it everybody together? Those are big, um, long-term decisions.
And that's a neighborhood school issue too, because we don't know who needs what, what happens to particular living in my neighborhood versus yours. Maybe my neighborhood, you know, happens to have a bunch of kids that are eleven, that are, you know, soaring in yours, does not, it's just sort of like, and they happen to go to these particular schools, so that is another conflict. For the neighborhoods.
But I want to emphasize, none of this is a one-time decision, this is something educational leaders at the building level and at the district level are constantly looking at throughout the year, it's not a one-time.
Just to piggyback on that, we rely a lot of the teachers and principals, they know the kids better than us, so I think when we get down to the manual level, let's close conversations with the building leaders. At, you know, what do you need in this building, this class, yeah, this, that, that's why the numbers sometimes will, you know.
That's why the numbers sometimes, well, you know, they're pretty, you know, they're pretty close with, even within the schools. This class might have twenty-two kids, this grade four, the same building might have eighteen because there's higher need here, more supports there. And that's how we define that. So that's where we come to that, is the building.
Mr. Wong has a question. I just have a quick clarifying question. Uh, I think sometimes as educators, there's, there's so many acronyms and words. Can you just clarify tier one, tier two, tier, tier three for everybody? Sure, absolutely.
When you say, oh, we still have tier one.
So, yep, I think, um, Principal Beatty mentioned it in his, in his.
He did as well, I did my invention in that.
No, that's okay. Um, so it, tier one are supports that all students get. It's called the multi-tiered system of supports, which is sort of the next generation of our tier. So tier one are supports that all students get. Tier two are groups of students, um, targeted supports. So like, uh, groups might get pulled with a reading specialist, so on and so forth. And tier three are individualized, very specialized supports made for one or two individuals. Um, and it isn't just with academics. It can be for social, emotional supports. It's what that student needs now. You're welcome.
Um, so first off, thank you for being able to, you know, we talked about that, remember that in that session? And I think one of the biggest things, including with all of the information we've been given tonight is, how can we push out information to help families understand the process? I don't want to get into, you know, individual students from individual grades, which is in general, what do we do? Um, when we look at Superintendent Burkhead, so we sat down with all the forty-nine students I know. What was the general opinion that we were looking at? What are, um, you know, some of the interventions we talked about is potentially, and then, you know, just generally, what is that process? Um, you know, we heard in the thought exchange that communications came. Um, if, if there's a way to pay no question, mention about, or even give an example, give example to, like, you know, that is, here's the process to go. I don't think it's a lack of faith in the process, just understanding it. Here's where the, the problem is coming in. Um, we're thinking if we can do that at some point in the near future, you know, in September, October, it'll, it'll help them understand, well, this is what our teachers are looking at. Um, in June, as they're getting ready to, as kids are ready to another grade and then you're looking at, right this school year. And we have difficulty with the different programs that we use to, um, you know, see, see what kids' benchmarks are. Then we follow through with the individual students of the year. And just understand that process a little more might alleviate some of those concerns. And at the same time, if a parent does, like, a fully equipped, or take a passionate parent every day of the week, um, you know, what's the process we're going through and being able to then interact with this group? And work with problems and this is probably more peaceful than Burkhead's. How, you know, we, how some of that information gets out and how we control it. But the parents know this is the way that they need to go to, to resolve an issue. This is how our teachers need to work to say, hey, look, any help here or more? You know, this is going really well for me to ensure that, and maybe some of it can use across the entire district. Um, I, I think getting to that point would be something that would be beneficial to create a big desk group. And just as a way to try to pool set of information about, even if we say, you know, obviously we have to cap that because it's not a hundred percent consistent across every use case, but, you know, this, here's on the website, you can see, here's the process. And not necessarily ask for you to come to every school committee meeting and walk through this, the process time to time again. You know, a great job, we'll be able to, here's what we're doing from a perspective. I think this is just the next step of, you know, teaching, but here's how we, at the same time, we're secondary and, and help students learn throughout their good school. And I know very clearly that I don't make sense, but.
Uh, I think so. Um, so, uh, I think, uh, teacher, principal, they, they'll spoke. There, there, like you said, there, there's a chain of community that is, that is the most useful because people who work with your child on a daily basis know your child the best. Um, and that's where conversations have to happen. I think sometimes me, um, and especially you, might get bogged down in some misinformation. Um, and that is, when there is misinformation, that is not something we're putting out. So I think we had a couple of emails that said we have seventy-five kindergarten respect pushing. Um, I mean, that's just not true. We have no idea where that came from, um, and people, and it's a panic, right? It's a panic, oh my God, that's just not true. Um, so, uh, I don't know, I, I, uh, I think we have to be very thoughtful about how we use our pride and build trust and combating misinformation, whether it's put out online or whatever. That is, uh, not sure that's the best use of our time, um.
I'm ready to say COVID to Facebook, it's more just, like, you explained the process very well, you know, in a primary conversation. I mean, there's seventy people on the Zoom, thirty in the room, maybe two thousand students. You know, I mean, we're obviously getting a very small group, you know, that information comes out. And here, I believe, nine times out of ten, information on Facebook is lost. Nothing we can do to control that, it's just, it is what it is. But being able to control the narrative, you know, properly, really, over the last years. Any, anyway, we can do that, I think, which is help make sure that the communities are worth, that the hard work is going on. You have the scene, but, no, you don't say it's not going to be, I mean, tomorrow morning, I expect you to give your job into a bottom. I will pay them that, but, yeah. Knowing some of the process, it's done, I think we, I guess, if this will be your setup, so.
Well, so I, I don't know.
And I, I expected to give you an answer tonight, but I'm just.
Yeah, if there's anything that any of you would like us to present on leadership or going on ever, just like today, you'll of course bring that, um, to the, that's still.
And then if I say the, you didn't like end of the summer, in the fall, like, you know, and you could, we had something like that. Say use some of the, um, maybe the specialists and some of the, the controls that bring in the classroom to help the teacher COVID and actually, you know, either get the supports they need or, you know, you know that, oh, supports are varying, the teachers comfortable going through, you know, day by day, it's all.
Yeah, I guess comment, that was kind of a, across the one care question, I think. Um, I do recall in the past that we did have enrollment, um, projections. I don't recall it, but when we got them, it was around this time or maybe in September, I feel we mentioned from a moment. But I think that the one, I think one differentiating factor, I think one differentiating factor was that the charge for kindergarten, we need to keep track of kindergarten enrollment to see if we can make the revenue projections. So I don't think it was, it wasn't necess, it wasn't necessarily to show us class size. It was to project how we're going to meet the budget based upon revenue. Now that we don't have tuition for full day kindergarten, that information wouldn't be necessary relative to generating revenue. It would only be reflective of the potential class sizes. Does that make sense?
Most of the information that needs.
But I, I do, I, I do want to say that at some point, we did have enrollment projections at some point in budgets in the past, I think.
Yeah, you know, yeah, it's also tied to like, uh, it's also tied to MSBA, I think.
Yeah.
Projection of certain enrollment building size is very, so I think it's good presented, but not like for this particular.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm just saying that, like, I clearly respect the chain of command. Hundred percent agree and anytime I get an email, I say, or if I bump into somebody, I say, maybe talk to the teacher, maybe talk to the teacher. I get that. I guess the thing that I keep coming back to and it's related to what everybody here is saying is, I think part of the way we combat misinformation and panic is making high-level data available to the community to say, this is, this is, these are the numbers potentially at today, but I know things can change. At this point in time in May, these are the numbers and this is how we intend to address it. If you have questions, reach out to your teacher. That, to me, that is when you reach out, uh, rather than hitting the panic button because you don't know the number, going to the teacher, getting a number, and then you know how that telephone game works, which is I start to Janice and by the time it gets to Peter, it's thirty elephants in a room with, you know, a baby running the show. So I just think having that high-level data at the outset so that you can go in as an informed parent and have a educated conversation with that teacher. Just as a parent myself, it just feels better for me. But again, I'm just one person with, with, with an idea, so just want to pop it out there.
Yeah, um, so I know, you know, those emails were, you know, they were tough to read. And I can, I can feel the disappointment that I think a lot of parents would, um, might be feeling. They might, they thought they were going to hear today, but this is, this is what, what makes it difficult for us because we want everybody to be happy and have what they want for their students, but we also have to be faithful in what you and Superintendent are doing. So it's, it's not easy. And of course, that is the decisions you're making, the decisions based on enrollment today. That can change. You don't know. It can change. Okay, I, my point also then too, when, as listening to Bill talk about how, um, the staffs and schools, you know, we watch presentation after presentation of what the schools are doing to meet the children's needs in the classroom. Here are sort of the A, S E L.
Can I ask you two questions that just based on some of the comments you had in the, in the report? Um, you talked about the metro states. Are we, we expect to see a rise in metro student pressure? Or is that expected to continue?
Um, we have additional, um, metro students, um, that we're getting in grades. Um, currently they are assigned to, um, we can see that we're working at Jalen's for our student.
No, the way, the way you said it, it sounded like the number was going up, which I think is great.
And every year, every year, when students graduate, um, our metro director, um, goes to metro headquarters, gets applications, discusses what the principals will be like at the seats. Um, they were hoping to take them at all schools, but there's just.
No, I, I just want to get some, I hope, I hope that, if you see that going up.
Metro process stays down. Their price tool down, numbers, that's what's stayed the same. I anticipate, if we saw this number, it was always breaking up.
Okay, um, and then, there's a question here, Superintendent Burkhead. Wait, how often are we looking at just, uh, the homes that are, um, covered up yourself to suppress the district? Is it, you know, weekly basis as well? Is that more, I'm pretty worried.
Look at that, we're also looking at ugly cost, these abilities that you go, go deep into that, that checking in over ten years old. So you have that, and it's that also, as I said, base of year, projections based on people moving in from the gallery and children. So we have a lot of sources that actually feed into us.
Okay.
All right, so it is a public comment. I'm in our meeting. I would ask that, uh, as we are, this is our third, I believe, in person hybrid meeting. Um, if anybody in person would like to make a comment, please come up to the table, uh, state your name and address or school affiliation. And I did provide a copy of parts, public participation policy up there for anyone who wanted it, just for, uh, ease and resiliency. And, uh, we'll kind of talk between virtual comment and in person. Uh, I just want to remind everyone that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Um, we, we like, we want, we do want to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. Uh, for our policy, speakers are allowed up to three minutes to present their material. Uh, and please try to keep in mind, um, you know, in, kind of in steam with what's been going on tonight, with bringing your concerns and any kind of questions to the appropriate parties and utilizing the chain of commands. Um, public comment at our school committee meetings for topics that are within the school committee's scope of authority. So you may see us redirect, you know, to a different person or, we'll allow public comment, but we will be, um, have a public Q and A for a special. So if anybody wants to make a public comment, um, we're going to talk to it this time. Just show me, give me like a hand, like the best way to do it, maybe? Yeah, you have a, wanna? I will not forget about our virtual, anyone, please, second.
I'm upfront, um, Lauren Shea, six seventy-nine countryways, I'll keep it very brief. Um, I really appreciate, everyone on the committee, I appreciate you, Mr. Burkhead, I appreciate you. Um, it's a really hard job and I know that, um, I obviously don't like what I heard just now. Um, I think it's telling. So I think if we need to talk to teachers, I'm glad that Mr. Burkhead met Mrs. Ward and Mr. School, but the parents find out from staff and that's telling to me. They are looking for advocacy from us because they don't feel that they are being heard in that particular scenario. And I think that, uh, I think that we need to ask the teachers, can they teach a class of twenty-five? I don't, I love our specialists, but they don't replace a classroom teacher, a licensed classroom teacher. And there's lots of reasons, I'm sure other parents will comment, so I'm not going to say too much about it. But, you know, twenty-five kids in one room, the noise, it can be chaotic. Um, lots of kids have different sensory needs and I know everybody knows all that. I have no idea how many HYPs we have. I've heard it's a lot, but then again, I don't want to spread misinformation. Um, and I think we need to look back at number three on that list. It said hiring, hiring and valuing our teachers. And so I understand it's ideal to have a teacher for two years and he or she does have a spot. Um, I, I didn't think of that and that makes a lot of sense to me. Um, but it's unfortunate that it's my child who gets to do fourth and fifth grade at one time and who was in kindergarten with forty-three students, two teachers. First grade, I believe, forty-seven students, two teachers. We had to come here and ask for a para. First grade was also COVID, no school for three months or, you know, at home. Second grade, hybrid school, third, had three teachers. This year has been wonderful, three teachers, and now we're back fourth and fifth grade to twenty-four and twenty-five in class. So I really don't have anything to say, it's, nothing is personal. Um, it's just I have to stand up for my child, um, and what I think her needs are. And I'm not an educator, but I don't think anything can replace a licensed classroom teacher, um, in any grade. And that's, thank you for listening, I really appreciate it.
Mr. Gomfry, would you like to come up? I'm checking on James.
Hi, Kirk Gomfry, taking place, three kids, school system. It would have been great for a follow-up question to Assistant Superintendent about windows from these states, since we haven't had them for a few years. It'd be great to know when that would be. Uh, you mentioned chain of command, uh, Superintendent Burkhead, uh, in your discussion right now. That is one of the biggest complaints I get in some of the parents groups that we're in, is we don't really know who to reach out to and then days go by before it even goes back to anyone. And I understand everyone's busy, but it'd be great to have maybe a kind of hierarchy on that so people know where to go. And there, I think there should be a time limit on when you get back to people. So they're not left out there hanging. That's one of the biggest complaints in all the parents groups, ones I've made and ones I've had a lot. Um, so one of the things I wanted to really bring up tonight was, I'm here for all parents on this topic and it is transparency and truth. Mr. Burkhead and I have had a couple of conversations, uh, I know the school committee members. You talked at the seaside chat, I was at the town forum and one of the biggest words was transparent. You talked at the seaside chat, I was at the town forum, and one of the biggest words was transparency. Carrie Borkowski brought it up in her submission, so did Richard Taft, he brought it up in his submission. And that's all really we want as parents. And one of the things I discovered was, there's a eighth grade civics class here at Gates that is full of critical race theory. And I want to remind you, you told me on the phone, you mentioned it at various meetings here. Janice Limblon has been, uh, pretty active on Facebook. She has written to people, where is CRT? Well, here it is, right here in the civics class, full of all the tenants of CRT. And you, I'm sure you guys can get this class lesson from the civics teacher. And one of the things that you also mentioned, uh, you engage with people at the seaside chats, like there is no critical race theory going on here. Well, unfortunately, it is going on here. We got this through some kind of covert channels, but that's a lesson plan that's going on. And basically, if you don't know the tenants of, uh, critical race theory, you certainly can Google it. There's people who have been writing about it for about thirty years, we paint Geraldo. And what it does is, it separates people based on the color of their skin, it pits people against each other.
Mr. Gunther, I just want to remind you about our time, will maybe, could you wrap it up?
Yeah, I'll wrap it up, but we've been here for three hours, so time limit should really work both ways, really. But it, it, it categorizes people as oppressors or oppressed. But here in Situate, I guess we're mostly oppressors because we're white. It also assigns whiteness, it assigns white guilt, and it assigns, uh, people to those groups. I, I think, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Gunther.
it would be better to judge people on merit and character instead of categorizing people like this lesson plan does. Okay? And one other thing, uh, I think you should get an answer out within forty-eight hours to all the community, because you said transparency and truth, you said this wasn't going on. I'll lead this here, it is going on. And one other thing you said in seaside chats, you wanted people, you wanted to know why parents left and why parents left the school system, you wanted them back. They're not going to come back if this is going on. This is not, thank you.
Any else in person or virtually, if you'll see any virtual?
Ms., Ms. Brandalina, you do have a hand, you have two hands raised.
Um.
Do, do you want me to assist?
Sure.
Yep, um, all right. Uh, Ms. Withrow, you should be able to unmute yourself and, uh, just state your name and, uh, your address. Thank you.
Hi, am I unmeted?
You are, yes.
Okay, thank you, Seth. Hi, Laurie Withrow, sixty-two, and Vinyl Road. Um, I spoke at the last meeting three weeks ago about the, what Ms. Driscoll talked about regarding the class size. And what I thought we would hear tonight is maybe a chart in that actually showed where we have enrollment, the actual class sizes of each school. No, it was talked about a little bit, but we did not see the actual data. We did not actually see the transparency. And you have parents, I just heard that passion coming out of Lauren Shea's voice of, you know, these parents are sitting in that room, these parents are on the Zoom call, and these are their, these, their children being affected with nine days left in the school year. And it's just being confirmed this evening that these kids will be moved into classrooms of twenty-five kids at Hathaway School. And it's just a disservice to students to increase class size anywhere in the district during this post-pandemic time. This is not what is right for all children. Nobody should be in a class size of twenty-five kids after the past three years. And I do know that people went through the proper channels. They heard from their classroom teachers, they talked to the principal at Hathaway School. That's where they found out about this. They did not hear it at budget meetings where it should have been said. That's why they had to go through the channels that they went through, because it was not transparent. And now with nine days left in the school year, these parents are leaving that room. Emails are going to be going to each other, texts are going to be going to each other because they're disappointed. They're fighting for their children's rights to be taught properly after three years of a pandemic. Lauren Shea just gave those, gave that data of these children. So I am definitely disappointed that we have not fought. I still don't know why. I did not hear why these kids are being put in these classrooms of twenty-five kids. Is it budget? Is it, is it retirees? What is it? That was not answered tonight. Who's, who's being held accountable for this? There has to be accountability somewhere of why we are doing this to these young kids. And then I wanted to speak about public comment. We're four hours into the meeting and it's our first public, three hours and forty-five minutes into school committee meeting without any public comment. And yes, I, I am speaking about something that was just spoken about, but perhaps we could have some public comment at the beginning of the meeting. It seems like, you know, that you don't want to hear what we're saying, what we have to say. And that's why, that's why FOIA requests ended up having to be, um, done as well. Um, so, thank you very much.
You, Ms. Withrow, I will, um, I'm not going to respond to her comments, but I will infuse at this point, um, Superintendent Burkehead and I have had conversations about public comment and where it is placed in our meeting. And that was, um, we talked about moving it on this agenda because, I mean, if we wanted to, we could put it first. But we didn't think that was a change, we didn't want to change it for this meeting on purpose. But I agree personally that public comment should be at the top of the agenda. It, since it isn't a Q and A, it's an opportunity to get public, um, the public can speak. And, um, it actually, according to, um, consultants that I've spoken with through MASK, it, it speaks to a more efficient meeting. So, um, I, that's something that I think we need to look at in terms of, you know, the feedback from that. I, I agree. I think that, uh, in, in certain school committees do run it that way, many do, I've looked into it. And, um, MASK doesn't give direct guidance on that because I asked for it. They sort of say, we're not, that's your meeting, you run it how you want. But I am pretty strongly leaning towards it being at the top of the agenda because it does enable the rest of the presentation to be, you can sort of get your questions answered to some degree potentially if presenters know what those questions are. But when the questions are at the end, we all walk away. We're not going to walk away with any kind of a happy vibe. So, and I'm sure none of you will, in a sense, after we just had those great presentations. I'm sure everybody can agree that, you know, the information we heard today from administrators was great. But if, you know, if, if this is how we end our meetings, there's something wrong. Um, you know, you might not get the full thing solved or, you know, whatever, you know, fully completed. But, you know, I, I agree, I don't think it's right that people have been here for four hours and haven't. But I didn't want to throw that, like, surprise, it's at the top of the agenda. I didn't then think that that was the right approach either. Um, so I would love maybe committee feedback on that. I hear you on that. So that being said, um, moving on, public comment wise, any other?
Are you, are you sticking virtually, Ms. Brandalina?
I, I will, um, the, we have a, uh, in-person commenter.
Perfect, thank you.
Keep it in person, then I'll go back to our second, uh, virtual.
What do you think, um, for me, in Rachel's way? Um, my first question is, um, I don't expect an answer, but just to keep entertained, if the summer meetings could be.
So can we speak louder so the people in the back can hear? They just ask.
Yeah, see, that's the problem. I couldn't hear a lot of the meeting either. Um, it would be nice if you had microphones, um, so then everybody could hear. But also I was wondering if you would entertain having the summer meetings, um, in the middle school. It's a lot more comfortable over there than it is in this room. And maybe the technology might be better too, so that, um, printing is larger and people could see it better. Uh, one of the things that was said tonight, and it's really important, that children feel safe in school. We've had so many, um, school shootings, it can happen anywhere. So, um, I wanted to see if, um, you know, on an agenda, um, pretty early in the school year, if you could talk about what the safety plans are for these buildings. Are all doors locked? Do you have, um, school resource offices at each building? You know, what is your plan? Because, um, unfortunately, the world we live in, it's something that we have to, um, deal with. Um, you were talking about class size tonight, I do see that as a budget issue, but, um, I just was wondering if, um, teachers, if they can ever move, uh, between grades. You know, maybe there's a large fourth grade class, a smaller third grade class. Can they move in between and also can they move in between schools? If, um, you know, one neighborhood school was going to have larger classes than another neighborhood school to try to, um, have some equity. Um, also, um, a student was telling me that, um, in a seventh grade wellness class, that they were talking, the teacher was talking about how, um, you know, you could change, um, sex if you wish to. Uh, many parents, um, may just, may disagree with that. And I would consider that part of sex education. So, um, you know, more parents, uh, notified that they were going to be talking about this in the wellness class and, um, you know, put parents off to add to this because I think it would come under, uh, section thirty-two A. And another thing you talked about tonight was kindness and respect. And, um, you know, do we have the same kindness and respect if you should just agree? You know, and especially if you have a different opinion about something. We want to treat everybody with kindness and respect, even people who don't agree with maybe the teacher. And I think a lot of kids feel that they kind of, you know, because, you know, the teacher thinks differently. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Seth, if you could help me there.
Yep, we'll go back virtually. Uh, Mr. or Mrs. Tibbetts, you should be able to unmute yourself. If you want to do that, just identify your, uh, name, address, and the school you may be associated with.
Yeah, hi, Jennifer Tibbetts, one seven nine Judge Cushing Road in Situate, um, affiliated with Jenkins School. And, um, I just wanted to echo, I guess, the overarching theme of transparency. Um, I think when, um, Mr. Burkehead came on during the COVID year, I think everyone was applauding the transparency that was going on so we could all make the best decisions for our children. Um, it just kind of feels like this past year, the pendulum has swung maybe the opposite direction, which I can understand being inundated the first year with so much, um, so many opinions on something that none of us had all the information for. And now maybe just the pendulum swinging the opposite way. It just, the overall, I feel like if the information was provided in more frequent updates, um, and frankly, like for Jenkins staffing changes, it should be information that we're privy to. And if it's not, then that's a problem, frankly. Um, as well as for Hathaway class sizes, a lot of this information hadn't rolled out until after the early April deadline for parents to advocate for their students' needs. Um, as a parent, I put a lot of trust in the admins and our school committee. And I'm really thankful for the time and commitments and education that you've put into making schools at the best that they can. And if you say, you know, staffing changes are needed, I put full trust in that. But, and I will follow and support you, but I do feel like transparency, um, is needed early on so that, you know, you don't have hundreds of parents requesting ninety-minute meetings with you. If the information was provided, we could make decisions in March of whether, hmm, do I need to write a letter? Like, you know, based off what's being rolled out? Like, no, why, why give another three letters for my three children going in just to make sure that they're seated where they can versus putting trust in the process? That's, that's just what I'd like to say is, uh, you know, information earlier on so that you don't, aren't inundated by hundreds of parents and so that we can make those decisions by deadlines that are given to us in the spring.
Ms. Brandalina, are you staying virtual? Yes?
Sure.
Perfect. Megan C., you should be able to.
Let's stay virtual.
Okay, Megan C., you should be able to unmute yourself. If you want to just do that, identify your name, uh, address, and/or school you're associated with. Thank you.
Hi, um, Megan Cordaro, I am affiliated with Hathaway. I have two, um, well, I have a current second grader and then an incoming kindergartner. Um, I will echo all the other parents and what they have said tonight. Overall, I'm just very kind of disappointed in having like an unsettling feeling of not hearing exact numbers of enrollment, um, this evening. Um, it came from our principal's mouth at kindergarten orientation that there are forty-seven incoming kindergarteners at Hathaway, which would make it twenty-four and twenty-three students with questionable, maybe three kids aren't coming, which would make the classes twenty-two even. Um, knowing what's going on with the current third grade class at Hathaway, it just gives myself and I know other kindergarten or new kindergarten parents an unsettling feeling that, you know, what's going to happen with our kids down the road? Are they going to get another teacher? Are they going to have their teacher yank from, yank from us? So I'm just going to reiterate the transparency and the availability of num, class enrollment numbers would be wonderful. And again, it would help, probably the more transparent you guys are right now, the better and the less emails you guys are going to receive. And when we say we're fighting for our kids, it's because we have to fight for our kids. We're the only people that fight for our kids.
Thank you. I believe there's one more, uh, virtual.
Uh, yes, there is, yep. Yep, uh, Carrie, if you want to, um, Carrie's iPhone, if you want to, uh, just ident, state your name and, um, address and/or school you're affiliated with, thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Mason, and I have two kids that are affiliated with Hathaway. Um, I, I don't want to harp on the, the class size and everything. I think everybody else has, um, really supported that and I, I completely agree. Um, what I do want to emphasize is my disappointment in the, um, in the discussion tonight. And I thought, like everyone else, that we were going to come to this meeting and, you know, four hours later, when we get to this topic, we, um, come to find out, don't actually have any answers or any plans or any data to, um, help us. And that's what we thought we were coming here for. And I, I mean, again, I'll read, I'll, I'll say that the trans, there is no transparency here. I mean, when are we going to find out what exactly the class sizes are and what we're looking at here? The, you know, the week before school? I mean, this is, this is not acceptable. This is, this is not transparent whatsoever. And my other, um, the, my other topic that I wanted to, to talk about was the teachers. Um, you know, somebody mentioned before, how, how do the teachers feel about this? And they don't feel good. You know, what, this is that we're in a, we're, we're in a, a time of life where it, jobs are difficult to fill. You know, where is the support for the teachers? And what about the retention? We want to retain our teachers, they are valuable to our kids' learning. And this is just not, this is not supportive of the teachers. And if I were a teacher, I'd feel really disappointed, um, in the support that they're getting in this. Thank you.
Ms. Brandalina, we do have two more hands raised, you ready?
Sure.
Great, Jamie G., you should be able to unmute yourself. Just once again, state your name, address, and, uh, school you might be affiliated with. Once again, Jamie.
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Hi, thank you so much. Jamie Jackamose, nineteen, Edith Holmes Drive, sorry, it's a mouthful, both of them, my last name and my street. And I am at Wampatac. Um, I first want to thank Carrie for the hard questions that she asked during the enrollment. Um, I can say that my children are not currently affected by class sizes, um, because of the grades that they're in. However, um, it came to light to me that their first grade, ingoing first grade class at Wampatac will currently, as it stands, have sixty-six kids, which means twenty-two kids to a class. And that's before summer enrollment. And I know my neighborhood and I see for sale signs all the time and I'm nervous for them. Um, something has. Something has to be done. This can't keep happening. My now freshman was in a class of twenty-five, and it was the worst year of his life in second grade. It's not okay. We really have to do better for our kids. That's all.
Ms. Brandalina, you have two more coming your way. Chris with A.
I will, I'm going to switch. I thought there was only one more. At one time, there was only one more hand raised online, so I was going to close that out, but they continue to raise, so I'm going to go back to in-person for a few.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Katie Babadia, I have two kids at Hatherley and two kids at Gates. And I just want to echo what everyone else has said about the transparency and more importantly, just say how disappointed I am with the meeting tonight and the lack of actual data and enrollment numbers. I thank the person prior to me that spoke to this as well. I had been on school council at Hatherley for many years, and we had monthly meetings, not two or three times a year. And we had enrollment numbers. We had, you know, someone that might be retiring. We had incoming class sizes. We had all that data so that we weren't finding out a week and a half before school got out that we're now going to have two kids at Hatherley. And I didn't even hear if that was officially confirmed, like there was no actual data. So I'm just here to, again, echo what everyone has said about the transparency and many parents, including myself, I did meet with my child's third grade teacher, and they did hear from the principal. They did go through the correct channels. So I think both having the enrollment process like Mr. Long had suggested for public viewing, when you want to look at that flow chart or spreadsheet that you described, how you analyze it, that would be fantastic. But also just to recognize, like, what exactly should we do instead of just imparting you all with all these angry emails and upset emails because there's many other issues. And I have too many fish to fry right now, but I'm just going to say again that like more transparency and to speak with many parents, they did go through the correct channels. And just disappointed in general about the lack of actual data.
Ms. Brandalina, you give me the word. You want to go back virtual?
All right. Is there anyone, any other in-person participants that wanted to make a public comment? Mike, the last.
I still went through substantially in Bio Road, and I have my child at Hatherley, and I have all the kids that also went through there, or through the whole school system here. So not to harp on, I know everyone else has already gone through, because I think they've done a good job. What I want to bring attention to is we keep hearing transparency and trust was a great one that was brought up today and something that's come up. And I, I think we're going to have to verify, and I hope you guys can help us verify this, is that through the high school that a class wanted to do a themed day that was USA-based and the United States of America, but I guess they were told that they can't do that because that's white privilege. And they were told that that was a no. And they tried to change it to a Patriot Day theme, and they were told that that was even worse. I was, I know, we're going to verify where this came from, but if this is going on, you have no trust from anybody in this town, as far as I'm concerned, because I can't believe, living in this country, that we're having this conversation or having to bring this to attention that principals and other people in this system are telling kids, or what message they're sending to these kids that it's not okay to be happy and proud of our country. So, you know, we got to get our priorities straight here. Besides the academics and everything else everybody's brought up. But if we can't have this transparency where whoever made this decision should apologize to everybody in this town for making that decision, I think. And if they can't, then I'd like to know why. Why are they, why, what is the purpose of this message? What are you guys trying to put to these kids? Is it bad that they live in the United States? Is it bad that we're citizens of this country and in this town? Because I don't understand where this mindset is going, because there's a pattern going on here. I've been seeing it for a while now, from January month of the King Day. I won't even go through that whole disaster. No accountability, okay? Misunderstanding, I'm told. Well, there's a lot of misunderstanding going on, and I think people want some answers as to what the purpose is of this. This is ridiculous. And it's, it's shameful is what it is. So that's my comment.
Ms. Brandalina, you want virtual?
I'd just like to mention that tomorrow is Flag Day, and all the kids are being encouraged to wear red, white, and or blue.
Yeah, but there was a backtrack. It was a backtrack. We want, we just want to know who said it. That's all. Transparency.
I believe that that's being handled at the school.
Yeah, well, no one said anything. That's why everyone's upset.
All right, so Steph, Steph, I will take.
Yep, all right. Thank you so much. Chris, Chris with A K., you should be able to unmute yourself right now. If you can just state your name and your address and school you're affiliated with. If you are.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Chris.
Um, my name's Kristen Fitzsimmons. I'm at Chetway, and I'm affiliated with Hatherley. I have four children. My oldest is in sixth grade. And as I think the schools always do a great job with, you know, the majority of everything, I do think everyone, not just within this particular situation, everyone keeps blaming the pandemic, the pandemic, the pandemic. Well, I mean, my oldest is in sixth grade, and when she was in first grade, they had a substitute teacher for the year because someone was out on maternity. And everyone in Hatherley School that had children in that classroom were like disgusted with the lack of teaching, lack of control. There was probably twenty-five kids in the class. It was terrible. And from then on, you know, she shouldn't have even gone to the sixth grade. She basically failed out of the fifth grade. And but back to, back to going into my child going into the fourth grade. I mean, she's on an IEP, and I have three kids on IEPs right now. My fourth is going into kindergarten. She'll probably end up on an IEP. I was on an IEP, and I had the same disabilities that they all had. I went to Hatherley School. I had two teachers in kindergarten, three teachers from then on. There was three, first, second through fifth. And I had co-taught classes. And I'm, I'm forty-three years old, so this has been going on for quite some time that the school has budgeted correctly in order to have the correct amount of teachers in count of the children. So, I mean, it's really, really disappointing to me because I love Hatherley. I really do love Mrs. Ward. I love all the teachers there. But it's just so disappointing that, like, these children, not only mine, but these children are really going to be getting affected, even if there wasn't a pandemic going on. So I, I thank you guys for tonight. I know it's a long night, but I, again, I'm disappointed, too. So, thank you.
Ms. Brandalina, you have one more hand raised. Do you want to take virtual? Yes or no?
It's possibly on the same topic, so let's just finish the virtual.
You've got it. Allison, Allison, you should be able to unmute yourself. Allison, you should be able to unmute yourself. If you just state your name, address, and/or school you're affiliated with. Thank you.
Allison Harrington, fourteen, Heritage Trail. I am affiliated with Hatherley, and yes, I am speaking on the same topic. I do have a comment, and it was somewhat based on what the assistant superintendent showed with the importance of first to third really having small class sizes and as it relates to next year's fourth grade class at Hatherley. The fourth grade class at Hatherley had first, second, and third really impacted by the pandemic. I mean, their first grade, they missed out on a whole almost term being completely remote, where parents were having to do the education. In second grade, that was hybrid. This year, finally, it's the year where they were in school. So I think that has to be taken into consideration when you're looking at the teaching ratio for that grade. You can't just look at it as their regular fourth grade class because the pandemic impacted first, second, and third grade. So I think, I, I sure hope the administration is taking that into consideration when they are looking at having a class size of twenty-five children without move-ins over the summer. I will say, each time I have two older children, each, for each one of them, I've had to advocate for an additional teacher and additional section. My other two are now in Gates. And for my oldest, there was a class in first grade. They were a class of twenty-three and twenty-two. And over the summer, it bloomed up. And in second grade, they were a class of twenty-six and twenty-seven. So I hope there is a contingency plan in place should that happen with move-ins into the district for the fourth grade at Hatherley. Because I can tell you, a house in my neighborhood just sold, and there's another one across the street with a for-sale sign. The one on my street has small kids. I don't know what age they are, but if they're a school age, they're coming to Hatherley.
All right. So thank you. That's over three minutes. I just want to be cognizant of people's times. It's almost ten fifteen. So thank you for your comments. Did anything you wanted to add to wrap up for thirty seconds or so?
I apologize. I muted her. Allison, I apologize.
Sorry, Allison. You wanted to wrap up. I'm just trying to be cognizant of the fact that it's ten twelve.
No, no, no. I, I thank you all. I thank you guys, especially on the school committee, for devoting your time. So thank you. I want everyone to get to go home. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Back to in-person, or we're, I think we're done taking comments online. We're going to wrap it up and back to in-person. Finish off.
I'm Jack Gates, sixty times the road. I have four kids who have just had the fourth, thank goodness, just finished up and graduated, so they've all been through the system. I think, speaking to some other folks, addressing that, that, that situation that they were just, they were just talking about. I think one of the problems here is that in the, and you've heard this before, I know, but I'm going to say it again. I'm going to make it quick. In the school committees, on their website, anti-racial policy, it says, "We commit," this is the school committee, all signed by you, "we commit to proactively uprooting the systemic racism that currently exists in the situ public schools." I think that's problematic. I don't think that, that situ public schools are systemically racist. And I think that the majority of this town would agree with that statement. I think there's been some collective illusion that's been created here that we are a white Irish Catholic racist community. It doesn't exist. I'm sure there are, have been incidents. I know there have been incidents. I've been in the, I've been a part of those. But because of those instances, you can't indict the entire town. And it's getting very frustrating. And there is a pattern that's starting to be created. One other quick thing. Dr. McQuire puts out a great newsletter for everyone. Newsweek, every week she puts a newsletter out, and she had a phenomenal piece on Flag Day, which is very patriotic. I've been fortunate enough to be dealing with Dr. McQuire as part of the school council, called, at the high school. And I must say that she is a very open person. She consistently returns emails. She makes phone calls when someone makes the email. She deals with my extremely lengthy emails. But she's been a pleasure to work with. She is an advocate for these kids. I think that her, her plan that she presented today was fantastic. It was really centric on, on these kids' education and getting them into, into a good place when they, when they get this, in the school, school system. So thank you very much for your, for your time.
All right. One more. Speed dial.
Today, my name is Mark. I've been down here before. One oh two running road. My children no longer go to school. And my greatest joy is my kids. And today, I still even like seeing the kids that they grew up with and still watching them. I'm down here because of other parents and families and the feedback that I get from kids, mostly to support these people who've supported me in the past, even though I didn't know them before I came to school. I'd like to read the votes. This is from the town's situate, just a voting call, because I think it's reflective. We're in a very politicized, timeless society today. And I think you could say that D E I is in that culture war. And sometimes it seems like it's minorities speaking out here. In two thousand eight, Obama got fifty-eight hundred votes, McCain got five thousand. Obama, fifty-five hundred, Romney, fifty-six hundred. That's almost fifty-fifty.
I just want to keep it within the purview of what the school.
It is, it is. I'm just making a quick point, real quick. Last year, Donald Trump, the year before, it was seventy-four, like sixty-five, and the year after that, eighty-six to forty-six. My kids used to come home, you know, teachers that said stuff about the administration, Trump administration calling them morons, calling them idiots. I think it's reflective of, and again, I'm not trying to get into politics, but there's a large number of kids, and that's what those numbers reflect, of parents who voted opposite of the culture war, let's just call it, D E I. And so to sit here and think that there's a small number of parents that are concerned, there, there is a large number that have conservative values. And I, I would just ask you to keep in mind that you have kids coming in, learning D E I, and going home in this, against the values of their parents. This board has consistently said when I first came on that we want everybody to have a seat at the table. But yet then when I've watched the interviews for the recent committee school meeting, you said, "We chose in that meeting to listen to the biochicken LGBT community." All I'm asking you to do is say there is a large percentage of people out there with conservative values and to give them a voice. Mr. Burkhead came down and thanked you for those fireside chats. But there's other people out there, and you need to allow their voice under the board. You need to allow their voice heard. Thank you for your time.
All right. Moving on. Uh, approval of minutes. May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, school committee minutes. Yes. We're celebrating school learning. The paragraph. Oh, okay. Mr. Steve Swett. On our, May twenty-third minutes. That's it. That's the deadline.
I'm looking to approve the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two school committee minutes.
All in favor?
I'm fine.
All right. Lauren?
Juan. Sorry.
It's okay.
Same play.
Oh, it's finally your turn. Come on up.
Uh, Juan, S two two zero zero six zero nine. Total amount, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. From revolving accounts, the school lunch account, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents for meals and for food and materials. Non-resident tuition, eleven thousand, four hundred and two dollars and seventy-six cents. We returned funds to a student who was an exchange student who did not come here. Metco, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to first student who was transporting our students on late runs back to Boston. AP exam payments, fifty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. So that's, that's the large amounts out of the revolving accounts. Large amounts out of our local funds. Private school tuition, eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents to several different programs. Our gas utilities to National Bridge, fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. And those are the only significant large ticket items. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, correspondences, I did have a math mailer of ball competition. I don't know. Anyone?
Yeah, no, I think, I think that, um, so we get that every year.
Because like now's the time to sign up for the, who's great.
It's just, it's, you guys do like three days, it's like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. It's like, I don't know if you possibly do that.
And I don't know, but it's something to throw out there.
It looks like you could sign up for one, you could change a committee member.
But we have the, it's still in the budget.
I remember using it. Maybe it's like four hundred and fifty dollars for like early registration. Maybe we think about taking one registration and someone.
Some, somebody go. Busting, I don't know. I feel like we should, I don't know, we should go. I'll go.
I think it was a ma- I think it was a ma, uh, superintendent's going budget too, right?
Yeah.
Superintendents get invited to that.
To M.A. school.
Yeah.
In Hyannis, November? Yes.
Yeah.
Some, some go.
All right.
If no goes, no could go.
I'll make you consider. All right, any other business? Future agenda items? Okay. Take motion for adjournment?
Ooh, 10, 10:20 something. Motion to adjourn 10:20, I should, second, third.
Favor.
All right.